All right, I will call the Planning Commission for Thursday, June 25th to order. Trying to get back to my. Would everybody please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance? All right, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, invisible. Okay. I'm trying to get my Apple thing here to get to where I need to be. Hey, so we'll take action on the minutes, approval of minutes for the June 11th Planning Commission hearing. Does anybody have any changes?
No changes, Mr. Chair, from me.
No.
Okay. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll move that we approved the minutes from the June 11, 2020 meetings.
Thank you, John.
Second.
Thank you, Christina. It's been moved and seconded.
Would you like a roll call vote for it?
I think we have to have a roll call vote, right?
Yeah.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Commissioner Malley's not here. Commissioner Brown?
He's muted.
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Sinram?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Okay, and do we have any, anybody who has any citizens input?
There is no citizens input, Mr. Chair.
Okay. And of course, that puts us a little ahead of schedule again.
I just saw that Bob Malley tried to log in. He's in the waiting room, Jake.
Oh, perfect.
Pretty sure.
He's really going the extra mile today.
He's a good guy.
There he is.
Hi, Bob.
Hey, Bob.
Well, we did, we see him anyway.
Yeah.
He's trying.
It looks like he might be having a connection issue. Uh, Bob, if you could hear me, try leaving your video off for a moment.
Morning, Bob.
Good morning.
Good morning, Bob. Good to see you.
Had enough for how long? We'll see.
Thanks for joining.
Well, we just approved the minutes from the June 11th meeting and we're waiting, waiting till 9:05 for our continued item from the last meeting.
Okay, I'm, uh, we got delayed by traffic, so I've just coming through Cal Stogge, so I don't know how much longer I'll be on until I get to Santa Rosa.
Okay.
But you guys go ahead. Don't wait for me.
Well, we appreciate you attempting to join us.
Yes, certainly.
Okay, I have 9:05. So I'd like to reopen our continued item from the June 18, 2020 meeting. It's a public hearing on the Guanac Valley Mixed Use Plan Development Project. It's AM 18-04, DA 18-01, GP AP 18-01, RZ 18-01, RZ 20-01, GPD 18-01, SD 18-01, SD 20-01, UP 18-49, and UP 20-02. Project applicant is Lotus Land Investment Holdings Incorporated, proposing to designate the Guanac Valley site as resort commercial and rezone it to Guanac Valley District, GVD. Project locations are 22000 Butts Canyon Road, Middletown, 21000 Santa Clara Road, Middletown, and the southeast corner of the intersection of Butts Canyon Road and Highway 29.
Good morning, Commissioner Scott DeLeon, interim director of Community Development Department. Good morning to everyone. Thank you for being here today. Just a couple of quick notes before we get started. We're going to be following the same procedures that we did last week. We're here in the office, in conference room B in the courthouse, attempting to maintain as much social distancing as we can. The speakers this morning will not be wearing a mask to help facilitate sound quality, but the rest of us here in the office, here in the building, will be wearing masks while they are not speaking. Just a quick review over last week's meeting. If you recall, staff made a short presentation to introduce the project. That was followed by a thorough discussion of the EIR by Ryan Sawyer with Analytical Environmental Services. And then we had a presentation by the developer, followed by public input. Your Planning Commission had a number, had four actually, issues that you wanted additional information on. And this morning, I am going to tackle the first issue, and that is going to be the consistency of the Guanac Valley Mixed Use Development Project with the Lake County General Plan. And then there were some responses, we'll be preparing some responses to issues that were raised by the comment letter from Caltrans that was received the day before the meeting last week. And then, and Ryan will be handling those as well as the summary of the changes of the draft EIR. And then finally, you had requested that we summarize recommended motions. And in the staff report that we prepared for today, the last, the last two pages are are sample motions. So we're hopeful that 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 will address your concerns about the motions. So if, if you don't have any questions, I'll go ahead and get started with issue number one that was raised, and that is the consistency of the, of the plan with the Lake County General Plan. And if you recall, this issue was raised by the Sierra Club and Victoria Brandon, and she referenced a modification that was made to the general plan following a lawsuit that was filed against the Crystal Lago project. And basically, as a result of that, there was an additional land use put into the, into the county code, and it basically restricted the residential component of mixed-use resorts to not allow more residential units than resort units during the course of construction and full build-out. This particular project, for this phase, they are proposing 401 residential estate unit villas plus 35 housing units, which is the equivalent of the, the cohousing workforce bedroom units for a total of 436 residential units and 338 resort units. And then on, under total build-out, they're proposing approximately 850 hotel and resort residential units and 1,400 residential estates. So on face value, it, it goes against the policy of no more resident, you know, no, no residential components shall not be more than, than the resort units. What we'd like to, to offer is the Middletown area plan and the special study that was prepared determined that the site could accommodate approximately 800 units. And that is identified in the project, project description, and it's acknowledged in the, in the EIR. And however, this first phase is less than 800 that was suggested as the limit in the Middletown area plan. So though this project is not technically consistent with the current general plan, it is consistent with the Middletown area plan and the special study for, I should say, this phase is consistent with the Middletown area plan and the special study that was performed. We will be proposing a modification to the, the County General Plan, and I'm going to get to that in just a minute. But I want to go through our justification for that modification. The Middletown area plan was, was prepared prior to the change that was made as a result of the, the lawsuit from the Crystal Lago project. So I, I think this project, and what we need to be looking at is consistency with the Middletown area plan, because that's what was in place and, and should be what, should be regulating what development occurs on this piece of property. Again, the general plan modification to limit the residential numbers came in after the Middletown area plan. I should also note that in the Middletown area plan, and I'm going to read directly from the plan, "Any future increase in overall density should only be considered if it is necessary to support tourist-related development consistent with general plan policies." And in such cases, the residential development would need to be subordinate to a primary commercial development. Under these circumstances, amendments to the general plan, land use and zoning designations may be considered in order to facilitate appropriate substantial resort development. In other words, future phases of this project are going to depend on, and you heard the consultant and the applicant say this last week, future phases are going to, going to be based on market demand. So there will be an opportunity to review this in the future for consistency with the Middletown area plan and perhaps additional increase in overall density of the residential units, and it's going to be based on the demand for the resort. So we believe that this project is, is consistent with the Middletown area plan. And we proposed a modification. It's actually a, I'm going to find it here. I apologize. I've got, I've got a number of things here. Thank you, Mark. We are recommending that the County General Plan Policy LU 6.12 be revised to include the following new section, and this is in your staff report. It would be 6.12.3. The provisions of LU 6.12.1 and 6.12.2 shall not apply to the special study areas of the Middletown area plan. And again, in your staff report, you'll see 6.12.1 and 6.12.2 illustrated or are spelled out for you in the staff report, and it's basically the, the limitations that I just described. Again, we, we feel that the Middletown area plan is the driving document for this project, and adding this additional provision will simplify that and bring the project in, into compliance with all plans. Little, a whole lot said there. I apologize. A little bit complicated, but hopefully I've been clear and be happy to try to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you, Scott. Does anybody have any questions about that?
No, Mr. Chair.
No.
Great. So what we're going to do then is we're going to move on to issue number two, which is the, the issues raised in the comment letter from Caltrans. And I'm going to turn that presentation over to Ryan Sawyer with APS. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Scott, good morning, Commissioners and members of the panel. As Scott mentioned, I'm Ryan Sawyer with Analytical Environmental Services. I'm going to be providing a summary of the responses to the issues raised in the Caltrans June 17 letter. We actually provided detailed responses directly within the supplemental staff report, so I'm just going to paraphrase those here. So to start off with, the Caltrans letter requested a number of items, including that future phases should be subject to additional analysis related to vehicle miles traveled. They also requested that a public transit connection should be made between Middletown and the Guanac Valley site. That additional bicycle parking should be provided at the Guanac Valley site. And that additional bicycle routes should be developed between Middletown and the Guanac Valley site, as well as within the Guanac Valley site. So regarding the need to address or provide additional analysis related to vehicle miles traveled associated with the future phases, the final EIR actually does include a programmatic analysis of the vehicle miles traveled impacts associated with future phases, and it determined that those impacts would be significant. So the mitigation measure 3.13-4, which is in the proposed mitigation monitoring reporting plan, requires preparation implementation of a transportation demand management plan for both the development of Phase One as well as future phases. So we already to address the vehicle mile traveled impacts of future phases. Additionally, as future phases move forward with project-specific proposals, CEQA announces will be required for those future phases, and as a part of the CEQA review, a vehicle miles travel analysis will be conducted as required by CEQA. So that is how we propose to respond to that point raised by Caltrans. Regarding the request for a public transit connection between Middletown and the Guanac Valley site, the mitigation of the final EIR requires that the applicant implement private shuttle service between the Guanac Valley site and the offsite workforce housing in Middletown with a stop at the Lake Transit Bus Transfer Point in Middletown. So thus, this private shuttle service would provide a direct and possibly more convenient option for employees in the public to access the site that would effectively replace the need for public transit to the site. Implementation of this measure would be consistent with smart mobility principles by promoting connectivity and mobility in rural and tourist-oriented areas. And so accordingly, we were not recommending any additional mitigation under CEQA at this time. Regarding the request for additional bicycle parking mitigation, the final EIR specifies that as part of the transportation demand management program, the applicant will be required to monitor and provide adequate bicycle parking spaces to meet or exceed potential demands. Therefore, if additional bicycle parking is determined to be necessary, the transportation demand management plan will be adjusted to require the adequate bicycle parking is provided. And just for reference, currently, the Guanac Valley require one parking space for bicycles per 15 spaces for vehicles. And Caltrans issues was, was that that was not enough, but there is flexibility in the transportation demand management program to adjust that if needed. So regarding bicycle routes, mitigation of the final EIR does include a variety of measures to promote non-vehicle modes of transportation. Additionally, the final EIR was revised in response to Caltrans comments on the draft EIR to include mitigation that requires the applicant to enter into an agreement with the Lake County Area Planning Council to play a fair share towards pedestrian and bicycle improvement projects in Lake County and Middletown. So we do have mitigation measure related to that currently. Also, I wanted to mention in this letter, Caltrans pointed out that the findings of fact, which was included as an exhibit to the original staff report, contained essentially a typo. We've corrected that, and the revised finding of fact was included as to your supplemental staff report. So I'll also go ahead and provide a summary of the third item in the supplemental staff report then, which was the summary of the changes to the final EIR that were made since the draft EIR.
Robin, Orion?
Yes.
This is Commissioner Hess. Thank you for that presentation so far. That's all talking about flow and movement of people once the project was completed. One of the things I would like to drill down on today is traffic while the project is underway. And that doesn't speak to the points you raised today, but I do want to talk about traffic on Butts Canyon Road and other projects that were going on at the same time. Possible construction of a roundabout at Butts and 29. And just to understand as a commission, how that will all work together and the implications for life on 29 and Butts Canyon Road in South County.
Okay. Do you want, would you like to get into that now, or would you like?
No, I just wanted to put a marker in there since we were talking about transportation, but to let you know that that's on my mind.
Okay. Great, I'll be prepared to address those questions and later. So I'll just proceed them with going through the third item in the staff report, which is the summary of the changes to the final EIR made following publication of the draft. And so it was explained in the staff report, volume one of the final EIR consisted of the comments received on the draft and the responses to those comments. Therefore, all of the material in this volume is new and was not previously reviewed by the commission when they were reviewing the draft. Additionally, volume one includes a brief summary of four changes to the proposed project that were made since publication of the draft EIR. These changes were made primarily in response to the comments received and result in equal and more stringent environmental protections. And they include changing the name of the proposed Red Hill Planning Area to Gulf Course Estates to avoid any potential confusion with the Red Hills wine-growing region. And slight modifications to the open space overlay zone boundary to accommodate project while still maintaining the overall 2,765 acre size that was required by the water rights EIR mitigation. Of the addition of 400 acres of habitat connectivity easements to address concerns related to wildlife movement corridors. And additional requirements in the wildfire response plans require the establishment of roadway fire breaks upon occupancy of the structures versus leaving the timing of the fire breaks to the discretion of the homeowners association. And also to require that primary structures are equipped with an exterior fire suppression system. Volume two of the final EIR consists of a revised version of the main body of the draft EIR with the changes shown in underline for additions and strikeout for deletions. So a detailed summary of this is actually included as exhibit two to the supplemental staff report. And it's shown therein mostly the changes were made in response to comments, and they included clarifications related to the project and existing vineyard development within the site, as well as essentially additional mitigation requirements and restrictions. So it should be noted that there were no new additional significant impacts identified as a result of the comments and the changes made in the analysis. And volume three of the final EIR consists of either new or revised technical appendices prepared since release of the draft. Volume one of the EIR includes a summary, a pretty detailed summary of what those changes are, and I also summarized that in the PowerPoint presentation to the Planning Commission last week's meeting, so I won't go through it again unless you have any specific questions. So any additional questions on that? Okay. Great. concludes my portion.
Okay, John, do you want to address some of your questions now, or do you want to?
I'd like to bring those things up. On the other hand, as long as we have Commissioner Malley with us, if he's in danger of losing the connection, perhaps if he's live with us now, he'd like to weigh in first.
Uh, no, I don't have anything to add at this time. I think I should be fairly stable now that I'm in Santa Rosa proper and heading towards San Francisco, so.
Okay. Well, Mr. Chair, if you don't mind, then I'll just pursue a couple of questions that have come up in the course of reading that very detailed document. And thanks to staff on all sides for the additional data, the errata, the the responses to additional questions. That's a lot of work to pull together in addition to everything else in the course of one week. I've been thinking a lot all week about traffic and about the project, which of course I support and which I think will be a real benefit to South County, but there are going to be years of, of building and additional traffic on Butts Canyon Road, additional noise. If the pipeline is ever built out, there will be implications for traffic and all of the rest. There's already a problem at the intersection of Butts Canyon Road and 29 during a normal year when people are commuting or going to school or coming home at the end of the day. And I think a roundabout, as Caltrans suggests, might be the best solution, but that would add even more congestion and traffic to that part of the South County at some point. And I just want to be sure that, I mean, it seems to me that most of the things you've done with this development have been carefully thought out and and are considerate of the community. But if you could just talk for a bit about how you're going to make life as bearable as possible, especially for my friends on Butts Canyon Road during this first phase?
Jake can respond to that?
Sure.
So I wanted to bring your attention to mitigation measure 3.13-1, which requires that the applicant essentially pay to install an intersection improvement at Butts Canyon and 29.
Right.
And as you pointed out, it's not clear if a roundabout would be the right solution there. It could slow things down. And so prior to determining whether or not a roundabout or signal would be the appropriate mitigation there, there'll be an intersection control evaluation study, which is a specific study that's required by Caltrans that will identify the appropriate improvement. And I think some of the factors of the intersection control evaluation, or ICE, is the term that Caltrans uses, I believe, that they take into consideration when determining what is the appropriate control there. Include the accident rate and how many accidents could be avoided by a roundabout versus a light. And so there's a number of factors and would the roundabout function as efficiently as the light, et cetera. So that will all be essentially subject to an additional study and, and by, by engineers and fleshed out. Additionally, as part of construction, a construction management plan will be prepared. I think, I believe that's a mitigation measure. I'm not seeing it here. It's, it's a typical part of construction, and I believe it's actually in the construction plan, which was Appendix CP to the draft EIR to include certain measures to make sure you're not resulting in too much congestion on the road or issues turning on and off the project driveways. Also, there's going to be fairly large onsite camps for the construction workers, and that will also reduce the amount of vehicle trips just from the construction workers going on and off the project site and large staging areas within the project site to reduce, you know, the daily traffic issues that you might see from construction.
Well, I would just hope that perhaps there's a way of staying in touch with residents on Butts Canyon Road since there can't be a sound wall constructed or anything like that. Maybe let people know when it looks like there's going to be a lane shut down in one direction for a few days, or just to, just to make that part of the process as bearable for the people who will bear the brunt of that on Butts Canyon Road.
Commissioner Hess, as the Public Works Director, one of the things that we require when there's any construction being done on, on county roads is traffic control plans. If there are any road closures, either, either temporary, daily closures or, or longer, there needs to be public notice. We have a number of, of requirements to make sure that the, the public is notified. So I, I think our procedures and our encroachment permit process will, will help, will help the task.
I appreciate that, Scott. I guess I'm, my thoughts are more about how all of this will stack up. Will there be a roundabout going on at the same time there's work going on 20 on Butts Canyon? At the same time, Valley Oaks will be building out some part of its development. It's, it'll just be a lot for South County to handle and to, and to be as, to minimize disruptions is my goal. Thank you. May I proceed to another question? And I may be getting ahead of you, but I'll just put out my questions right now. The offsite well, now, is that going to be annexed by CCWD? Is that water, should it be tapped only heading in the direction of the Guanac Valley site? Is that separate from the water that CCWD would provide to the Middletown housing?
Yes, so to respond to this issue, the proposed offsite well is only proposed to provide non-pollable water supply for the Guanac Valley site. It's not proposed to provide water supply to the offsite housing in Middletown. And we do state in the EIR that CCWD or County, McCounty Water District would provide the water supply for the offsite housing in Middletown. So it's, it's not proposed to serve that site only in the Guanac Valley.
And that is the, that's the well that's close to Middletown Mansion. And that is the, that's the well that's close to Middletown Mansion, correct? Uh, you have an easement of some kind that gives you access to those water rights as well? Just so people listening in may be able to visualize the location of that offsite well. I think there's some concern it's too close to Butts Canyon or just exactly where it is.
Correct. Um, I might be able to, if you give me a second, I might be able to pull the screen to show you, um, with a, with a figure where it is exactly. But the applicant owns the property essentially around the Middletown Mansion there. Um, so it's the property that is directly, um, northeast of the intersection of SR 29 and Butts Canyon. And it, there's a large open field and it sort of extends behind the Middletown Mansion. And they owe, they own that entire area. It's about 37 acres. And my understanding is the well itself is not actually, the existing well on that property is actually not within the property boundaries. Um, but there, as a part of the purchase agreement, they have exclusive rights to use the well. So in the event that they use this offsite well to provide non-potable to Guanac Valley, they're either going to improve that well or establish a new one. Um, so abandon the existing one and establish a new one within that 30s of property.
Sure, thank you so much. Just one other question about the Middletown housing. Would that construction, um, begin right away? Would that, would construction in Middletown be going on at the same time construction is going on on Butts Canyon and the Guanac site?
I, um, I believe it is the applicant's intention to have that offsite workforce housing up and available at the same time that the facility, the resort facilities begin to open on the Guanac Valley site. Um, I'm not sure if the construction, if the beginning of the construction will coincide exactly with when Guanac Valley would start moving forward. I, I, I think with the, um, the phasing there, that Guanac Valley construction most likely start before and that Middletown housing would occur sometime during the middle of construction of what they're referring to as Phase 1A.
Thank you, I think that's important for residents to know. Um, and just one other question, thank you for bearing with me. I know there's discussion of access road, um, primary access road option one or option two. Um, is that gonna be spelled out when you're actually applying for permits? That you're going to be choosing one or the other of those options?
Yeah, so when they apply for encroachment permits to construct the road, it would be either one or the other. Um, it will be made very clear at that time. And I do think that, um, and I'm not sure if we can allow the applicant to weigh in here, but it's my understanding, I believe, that they're leaning towards the option two of McCain Canyon for various reasons.
Sure, I, I'd be happy to hear from the applicant about that. Thank you so much, um, for taking my questions.
And, uh, do we have the applicants? Okay, so Kirsty Shelton and Catherine Philipakis, right? Is that correct? Were those the applicants? I need to get.
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. Okay, you two have the ability to mute and unmute yourselves now.
Okay, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Hi Kirsty.
Hi, good morning, uh, good morning, Chair Sondrum and members of the commission. Kirsty Shelton, representing Maha and Lotus Land Development Group. And I'm here with the developer. And also online is Catherine Philipakis with Prele Brata Martellar Legal Counsel. Um, if, if you don't mind, I, I'd be happy to respond to the question in regards to the access road on Butts Canyon. Um, we are looking at both scenarios. The McCain Canyon entrance is an existing road. Um, so it is a little bit easier. It also has, um, we can take advantage of less grading. So at this point, uh, we have not completed construction documents or submitted a grading permit. But when we do, it is looking like that, uh, that entrance to take advantage of the existing road is, uh, in, in our advantage. Um, construction on Santa Clara, the housing, the, um, offsite workforce housing, we are proposing to start to look at, uh, providing construction documents and be building it, um, prior to 2023. Um, I don't know if it would coincide exactly, but it is the applicant's intention to construct the workforce housing on Santa Clara. And if you don't mind, I'd like to take a quick moment and briefly describe some of the comments that came up on the Santa Clara Road property in regards to density. I took a look at the subdivision that was approved in 2006. It was now expired. But it relied on the existing zoning of single-family R1 zoning, which ultimately requested a total of 49 lots. And ironically, because we're asking for a higher density in the internal of the property, which would then create duplexes, our net result is only 36 lots. And so what it does is the periphery, the, where, where the subdivision is adjacent to existing neighborhood, it results in only 21 total lots, whereas the previous subdivision asked for 31 total lots on the outside. So what it results in is a much less dense by 10 lots to surrounding the neighbors. So by asking for the higher density of duplexes in the internal of the lot, it provides less density adjacent to the existing neighborhood and also is able to afford the, uh, communal park, which will be visible from the main road. Um, I also wanted to mention that in the record, we do have approval letter from the Middletown Mansion, the location of the offsite well. And obviously, we are looking, we, we are looking at hiring a local contractor who's very familiar with the construction, uh, traffic monitoring.
And Catherine Philipakis here. I just wanted to add on the issue of the well, because it is confusing, why is it on the Middletown Mansion property? That came about, uh, the well was originally on the property that Lotus Land now owns, that the applicant owns. The previous owner of that property did a lot line adjustment to sell some additional land to the Middletown Mansion. And some of that land that was sold to them contained the well. So at the time of the sale, there was an easement document reserving the rights to the water from that well, but selling the land. So the, it, it was the well that went with this property, the existing well. It's just now been moved onto the neighbor's property.
Okay. Um, does somebody, any of the commissioners have some questions? Some more questions they'd like answered?
No questions from me.
No questions for me. I appreciate everyone's, uh, follow-up on, on our questions.
Not at this time.
Bob, do you have anything before we open it back up to?
Not at this time.
Okay, thank you, Bob. Um, all right, now, we have to open this back up for public comment, is that correct? Somebody, staff?
It's, it's, you can, um, open it back up to the public commissioners for the most recent documents or you could open it up to the entire, um, project for commenting if somebody wishes to speak.
Okay. Um, as far as the commissioners, would you like it fully open for all comments? Or limited to, uh, just the new documents that have come out since last week?
Uh, this is Malley. Uh, I, as far as I'm concerned, everybody that wants to talk should be able to talk.
Okay, I feel the same, Bob.
I agree.
Okay. All right, um, I would like to go ahead and open this up to public comment for anybody who wishes to comment on any portion of this project. Uh, be sure and state your full name when you are speaking, please.
All right, so I have a dialogue out there to request people to raise their hands. I currently don't see any hands raised on Zoom. Um, but here we go, we had one come up, Monica Rosenthal. Oh, you, um, I gave you, or I requested you to unmute your mic. You should. Yes, there you go. And, uh, just give me a sound check and confirm your first and last name for me, please.
Okay, my name is Monica Rosenthal.
Thank you, we, we can hear you.
Okay, so actually, I'm turning this over to Terry Holberg, who is here with me. Um, she's unable to connect with Zoom at her own place, so she's here, um, using my Zoom connection. Uh, so Terry Holberg actually would like to, uh, speak. Thank you.
Hello, good morning, uh, this is Terry Holberg. I'm a Middletown resident. Can you hear me?
Yes, we hear you.
Oh, thank you. Um, I've always considered myself, uh, Lake County my home. I went to school here as, as my father did and my grandfather. Um, with this grand project of Guanac, it'll be difficult to express myself and, and, um, my concerns in just a few minutes. Um, mostly the Santa Clara Avenue, or I think you referred to it as the Santa Clara Road Development, is literally in my backyard. Um, they're asking for rezoning from R1 to R2. And this would make, uh, for extremely dense housing in our small town. It's also a floodplain. If this were to go through, we have great concerns that if dirt's imported, that it impacts flooding on our property. Um, there are debris piles on the property. Uh, will an, uh, analysis of the content be done to deter, determine if it's hazardous? I know they just spoke about reducing some lot sizes, but adding duplexes. It seems that the plans were approved back in 2006, that would, over a decade ago, uh, prior to the recession. Should a new development still be based on these old plans? The units have four and five bedrooms. Um, so some with granny units, it sounds like. So we hope that these aren't gonna be cookie cutter house plans. Uh, even with reducing the, the lots, the amount of lots, still with these large bedrooms, that's really gonna add a lot of people to the community, which we like to think of as a little country. Um, again, with this kind of density, are the highway and streets adequate to safely accommodate the, the zone change? What about pedestrian and parking? This could add up to four cars or more per resident, creating an overflow of parking. Will there be driveway space, adequate street parking? Or is it gonna out, overflow out of the neighborhood there? Um, and concerns about, what about road improvements on Santa Clara? I call it avenue, again, you said road, and the secondary access? Who will be maintaining the subdivision and the community clubhouse? Will housing be rentals, leased, or for purchase? And would it be for Guanac staff only or for the general public too? I feel that my town should be receiving the same considerations as the Guanac project, low impact on environment and lower density in our rural country community. We only have this one chance to get it right. And so I, I fear that my nights of stargazing and solitude and quiet, uh, quiet are in jeopardy. Um, I don't know that the well site that they speak of, that 37 acres, I mean, is it possible that the, this housing could be moved over to, to that site? It's closer to the, the Guanac, um, and would have less impact on the roads. Um, and, and the water being directed towards Guanac on that well raises concerns for our existing water and well sites locally. Um, again, will it be fire safe, energy efficient, walkable, and adequate open space? And of course, flooding is a really big concern. So it'll be, will it be permeable surfaces? Um, thank you for allowing my input, I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Would, um, would the applicant like to respond to any of these, um, further? I know we've already addressed a few of these issues.
Um, as you wish, I'm happy to respond. Um, just in summary, again, I just wanted to reiterate that the lots that are going to be adjacent to the surrounding area, the previous subdivision and this subdivision are within the general plan density allowed for this property. The previous subdivision had 31 lots in the periphery and R is requesting 21. All of those lots will be single-family homes and the duplexes will just be in the internal. So again, the same number of lots, just in a different land use density, with the intention to provide more of a transition to the existing neighborhood. Um, uh, in regards to fire resistancy, it is, um, going to be built to wildland urban interface, uh, requirements, which will require fireproofing. Um, it will be built to the new Title 24 Energy Code, which will require solar panels. Um, it is designed currently and will be required to, will be in full compliance with the Floodplain Administration. Um, there is current rain gardens and onsite detention for stormwater to, uh, to, to require onsite detention of any stormwater. Um, it, it's only requiring a higher density in the internal, which again protects the external. Uh, it will comply, there are no requests for variances or anything in regards to parking, driveways, et cetera. Uh, it'll be a typical subdivision, so all the roads will be dedicated to the county and maintained to the county. And all road improvements, including water and, um, sanitary sewer, will be installed by the development, to, by the developer for both the access roads and the internal roads within the project. Um, at this point, it is a typical subdivision. It will be available for rent, but we can't discriminate against our employees or the, the surrounding area. Uh, we do anticipate it to be constructed by 2023 and available for rent and, um, potentially by purchase. And, um, at, at this point, this property is an, an, an alternative as part of the EIR. Uh, we did analyze both onsite and offsite, but it was in our, it was, it was truly in our best interest to provide infill housing for Middletown, to provide more opportunities for both the employees and the community for onsite rental housing. Um, I think, and I just wanna say thank you for your comment and we're happy to work with you and, um, are really interested in, um, doing the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Kirsty. Could you, um, I believe I saw some documentation or it was spoken about at the last meeting. One reason why the housing was not looked at being put on the site around Middletown Mansion was because that is currently not served by any of the public services. Yet it's still within the growth boundary of Middletown, is that correct?
Yeah, I honestly, this is, so this, so the Santa Clara Avenue property and is already zoned and has a general plan analysis for this type of development. Where as though the property on Butts Canyon Road and, and State Route 29, um, is within the growth boundary, it's not actually designated. It would have required, um, some further review from the board. At this point, we felt that the Santa Clara project was more in line with infill housing goals of the Lake County General Plan and zoning and Middletown Area Plan.
Okay, thank you. Um, I see. I see, Jake, we have someone else with their hand up?
Yes, we have, uh, a comment request from Better Worlds. I've asked you to unmute your mic. Um, please give us a sound check by stating your first and last name. Hello, Better World? I'm not able to hear you if you're trying to speak. Yeah, we, we can't, we can't hear you if you're, you're trying to speak to us there.
If you could possibly, uh, send us a chat message, let us know you, that if you are in fact trying to speak? No. Okay. Um, for any.
Uh, you are unmuted, Better Worlds. It looks like you're, um, they're, they're, they're sending me chats, sorry.
Okay.
They, uh, you are unmuted. It looks like you're having issues with your actual microphone. You might have a, a mute on that device or maybe the sound, or the, the, um, output volume's down. Input volume. But you are unmuted on Zoom. But you are unmuted on Zoom.
Perhaps they may.
They said they would try again in a few moments.
But perhaps they'd like to call in on the phone.
They could do that as well as calling on the phone.
Perhaps we could circle back to them if there's somebody else ready to speak.
It looks like we have from Monica again. Just a couple minutes.
I'll get them the details to join via phone.
Okay.
Until then, we'll take another comment from Monica Rosenthal. I muted her.
You muted her. Up there, okay. Monica, are you there?
Yes, this is Monica Rosenthal. So, and I'll speak just briefly and in response to both Teri Hoberg's and Christie's comments. And, um, and again, you know, basically, I think, you know, from comments from both myself and Teri, and I know that there are other concerned people in Middletown as well. We're just looking to make sure that the development in Middletown respects, you know, is respectful of Middletown and, you know, also provides value to the community and the community members. So with that, with the density, while I can appreciate that on the outer edge, there are fewer lots than the project that was proposed in two thousand six. And I'm not sure, and again, the two thousand six project never occurred, never happened and failed. And, you know, we could argue whether that was a good project to begin with. But nonetheless, with the twenty-one lots that are on the outer area, there is also the option for the folks, whether it's renting or buying, and I'm still not clear on how this subdivision is going to be run as a workers' subdivision. Whether these houses are sold or rented or provided to the employees that are working out there. But nonetheless, those twenty-one units there are twenty-one lots. There is also an option there to add a separate dwelling, which I would assume would be a granny unit. For the interior, and again, while it's only three point five acres in the interior, it is increasing with a major use permit, which is required because it is beyond five duplexes. They're asking for twenty-nine duplexes. And again, these duplexes are four bedroom each. I believe there are only, each duplex, each unit is only about a thousand square feet. And those outer lying houses is described as thirteen hundred square feet, five bedrooms. Again, with that extra option for that extra dwelling unit. So again, I just, you know, the question here is, you know, the density in there and whether the roads and the street can handle it safely to accommodate pedestrians. I'm assuming there would be kids with all these bedrooms. Parking, where is the parking? Again, is it on-road, off-road? Does that allow for, you know, for safe travel through this small subdivision? And I think as Teri had mentioned, you know, is parking going to overflow into outer areas outside this community? Again, the question in regard to the clubhouse also, who's managing this? How, how, you know, how is this worker housing handled? So, thank you very much. Those are my comments.
Thank you, Monica. Do we have Better World waiting on a phone call?
I think we got it figured out. We're gonna get this shot again here.
Okay, and then we'll go back and address some of Monica's concerns again, perhaps.
All right, can you give me a sound check there, Better World?
Good morning. This is Dr. Mark Shapiro. Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Oh, great. Sorry for the inconvenience. Our families lived on Oath Hill Road since nineteen eighty-two. We, uh, we regard this forty acres that we have as paradise. It's a Garden of Eden. We enjoy all of the bounty that we have. We are concerned about noise, traffic, trash, crime, fire, diminished groundwater resources, and impairment of the beautiful scenery we have, the natural scenery. Over the past five years, we've seen devastating wildfires that have impacted us. These were largely related to human actions. These weren't lightning strikes. Since I came in nineteen eighty-one, I am just amazed at the amount of crime in Lake County. There were never any murders. We didn't see people in the gutters or in the lakes. The amount of trash that I see on the county roads has increased. It's, 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 it's not, it's hard for me to imagine that a project of this size is not going to increase the risk for all the things that I've mentioned, despite any plans that you have to mitigate. Where there are increased numbers and density of people, you find these things. So, my most proximal concern, though, is groundwater and how that will potentially impact my wells, especially during drought seasons. But fire, of course, is a tremendous concern of ours. All of the others are equally, all the others are very important. This is, it just is, it's hard for me to imagine how this will not impact the quality of life on Oath Hill Road by any means that are undertaken to mitigate this. It's my comment. So, I particularly like to hear about the groundwater, though.
Okay, thank you. Kirsty, could you possibly speak to some of the groundwater? You guys have drilled some more wells out there and, and what else have you discovered on the water? Are there other studies that have been completed on the groundwater?
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Shapiro. Just to, I don't know if you were at the hearing, at the hearing a week ago, but we did do a comprehensive presentation and the majority of our water demands are relied upon an existing surface water right, which is non-potable irrigation, existing entitlement that they've been relying on on the ranch. So, the only new water impact that this project will be relying on is potable, which are, which will be determined from existing and new deep groundwater wells. We, as part of the EIR, there was a water supply assessment for both the project level Phase One development and then also the larger programmatic level of the zone change. And the water supply assessment resulted that the property is sustainable and there's enough water to sustain the need. Again, for the most part, the only new need will be for the potable water. And all that information, I can show you where the documents are, or the EIR consultant can go in more detail specifically on that. And one of his other comments was fire. Would you like me to again reiterate all of our fire prevention measures?
Yeah, I suppose it might be, might be worthwhile to, I know you guys have a lot of plans to try and reduce as much fire hazard as possible.
Yeah, I'm happy just to reiterate and summarize all of, so, for the most part, a lot of the project has gone above and beyond code measures. I've been working very diligently with the local Cal Fire Department to determine where the impact of the fire may come from. The project is proposing irrigated fire breaks, continual fire breaks along every roadway, which will have fifty feet on either side of a cleared vegetation. So, for the most part, the ranch relies on existing ranch roads and it will be further improved by those ranch roads becoming two-way roads with a proper fire break on either side. It's a very large endeavor and a very big commitment. And again, above and beyond code, every single new structure will be, have exterior and interior fire sprinklers. In addition, on the highest peak of the property, there is going to be installed a high-resolution fire camera, spot lookout. And then also, as part of the very first phase construction, we are building a fire station for onsite fire prevention. And that's operational demand for construction. There is a whole construction safety manual. Everybody has to be educated. It's very strict on fire suppression techniques, having a water tender close by. There's a documented plan. I can show it to you. Also, I can assure you, the development team, they have an office on site. We'd be happy to meet with you and talk with you as a local neighbor to see what we can do so that you can be involved in any of the fire prevention techniques, even included in some of the imagery of the camera. Happy to work with you in response to that. Crime and safety. We are, we will be having at the resort our own security as well. If there's any other questions, I'm happy to answer.
This is Commissioner Hess. Could you talk a little bit more about the relationship the project will have with South Lake Fire Protection District? It's my understanding that their, their people will actually be the people present in that building, in that, in that office you will have on-site. So, there will actually be South Lake County firefighters in that emergency response building.
Correct, that's the goal. We currently have a fire suppression consultant onboard currently as we speak, who is helping us manage both the fire prevention for construction and assisting us in the fire prevention manual for operation, which will be maintained by the Homers Association. In addition, the fire station will be constructed as part of the resort opening. And it is, we're having continual conversations with Cal Fire.
Okay, I would also like to mention on, upon my visit, I did notice there was an area where a small grass fire had been started as it was an accident. But I would also like to note that I could see the improvements that were made upon that accident taking place. Basically, a little lesson was learned, I gather, and measures have been taken to help prevent that from happening again in the future. So, just from what I've seen with the project, as far as the design and what I've seen on-site currently, that going forward, this is gonna probably be a huge improvement on fire safety in that area. At least that's my feeling, to help address some of the concerns of the neighbors. As far as the, this, the offsite housing, what was the reason for, for designing five-bedroom, single-family, five-bedroom houses? I mean, is that kind of the way the state is looking to go? Or, I mean, I don't know a lot of families that require five-bedroom houses. So, I'm just kind of wondering what the purpose was for making four and five-bedroom houses.
Yeah, happy to answer that. For the most part, that original analysis was more of a density analysis. In fact, we were looking at being as comprehensive and as disclosure as possible so that the EIR could analyze the worst-case scenario. That includes the option of fully disclosure that the California state law allows any single-family home now to have an accessory dwelling unit to comply with the housing shortage. And so, we wanted to adequately disclose that they could legally have the option of an accessory dwelling unit. At this point, the document that you saw was very conceptual, massing, looking to see how much we could fit on the property, to be totally fair and honest, that the EIR could analyze, say, the most dense scenario and still being in harmony with the local policies, requirements of the general plan zoning, and also as in transitioning to the local neighborhood. At this point, we, the construction plans are being looked at now. We're considering altering the architecture to a more traditional approach to, you know, be more in harmony with the local architecture. So, at this point, I think the intention behind that was to provide a opportunity for rental housing for folks. We were told that Middletown has a very low housing stock. And so, we were attempting to fulfill that process. Again, I want to reiterate that the workforce housing is not a requirement. We're not required to do this. We were offering this for the community so that both, so that it didn't, so that our project didn't hinder the existing rental market and that we could help bolster it.
Thank you, Kirsty. I would like to say to the public listening that, and I don't know how long ago this was, perhaps somebody at staff in the courthouse could answer this, but I know that when we're redoing our zoning ordinance, we are supposed to be looking at where we can provide for more housing to be built. And I believe that is something that is being mandated from the state. Is that, is that correct? Perhaps Mark or Scott?
Yes, Commissioner Sunrun, that is, that is correct. That is a goal. And, um, it is a goal that, that we have here, not only at the state level, but here in Lake County. Yes.
So, um, this is something that is gonna have to be kept an eye on, or not necessarily kept an eye on, but an open dialogue with, within the communities. Because like I say, this is something that the state is wanting us to do, wanting the counties or the local municipalities to do. And so, I'm hoping that we can try and provide for the most housing in lots that are allowable, but still be able to respect the local communities and what the wishes of the local communities are as well. Um, I do see that, I'm sorry, I forgot your name, Better World would like to speak again. Is that okay with the other commissioners?
Mr. Chair, as long as there's not someone wishing to speak who hasn't spoken yet.
Uh, this is the only person I see with a raised hand so far. Let's actually, Jake, real quick, if we could try and see before we return to that.
Yeah, so, um, I don't have any, I don't see any other raised hands, and I have not received any chat interest in speaking.
Okay.
We have, we do have a couple of phones connected here. For the people who have joined us via phone, you can mark yourself as interested, as interested to speak by raising your hand, by dialing a star nine, I believe it was last time. I think we figured that out. So, you could try that and flag yourself to speak. So, yeah, we'll call on Better World again here.
Please.
All right. See if we get you guys unmuted.
Okay. So, thank you, thank you. I think.
What was your name again? Sorry.
This is Mark Shapiro. Mark Shapiro. Yeah, you made my point for me. There was a recent fire that was started by workers. I say again, where you have human activity you didn't previously have, you're gonna have problems. All of the problems that I listed are gonna impact those things. And especially when you have people that are itinerant. You know, the people that live on our road here and lived here a long time know what to do that's safe. They know what to do that's not safe. We, we're very attentive to this. When people move in and they haven't lived under these circumstances previously, they, they don't know what to do and they are not careful in the way that they need to be. There is going to be problems when you have people working under these circumstances, especially hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of people that are itinerant and not invested. This is gonna happen in all of the realms that I mentioned, okay? Now, what I'd like to know is about the water. Even though you say that you have plans to make the water on the site sustainable, what you haven't answered for me is how do I know that the activity, all of this, all of this increased usage of water below me isn't going to impact my water table and impact my groundwater that my family's used for almost four decades and that that's been used for more than a century on this property?
Is there somebody who would wish to address this?
Yes, this is the EIR consultant. I think AES can take this.
Uh, yes, this is a EIR consultant, I think um, AES can take this and I'd like to actually um, ask Jake if you can please unmute my colleague Peter Bonadelli who is on the line, um, who can speak to the groundwater issues and the detailed analysis that we included within the EIR.
Perfect.
Also, um, Jake, wh- while you are searching for Pete, um, he might be under the title of Analytical Environmental Services or AES. Could you also look for um, Reed?
I do see Pete on here.
It, it looks like Pete is unmuted.
Okay, great. Pete, you can begin.
Thank you. Um, my name is Peter Bonadelli with AES and um, I coordinated the water availability analysis that was completed for the project. Um, Reed Benson with um, Ludovico Scolmini. Um. Prepared the actual project report for us and he is also available with more detailed responses needed. Let me first start by saying that our firm has been working on the ranch since about 2001 and I was very strongly involved in the water rights EIR. And one of the key things that we went through on the ranch was to ensure that there was ample surface water to be able to meet all of the agricultural demands and that are present on the ranch. Um, the ranch has a solid supply of surface water. As a direct result of that surface water and the storage of that surface water, there is a very reasonably strong um, recharge capability on the ranch. The while it is not a single basin that facilitates pure recharge from one location to another, as most of you in that area know, the um, groundwater is somewhat scattered and you have to really search for it to pull it out. Um, but it has been identified as being ample. The rainfall in the area combined with the lack of drawdown that has occurred because, for agricultural use and for the proposed um, ongoing agricultural development on the property has minimized the extent to which groundwater has been used on the property in the past. The amount of groundwater in the area was looked at in detail and it was determined that the potable water supply, which would be the only water supply using groundwater was, there were ample resources within the 16,000 acres. The precise placement of all of the wells to pool that water has not yet been determined. Um, and that will be part of the actual development as it proceeds. I believe for Phase One, which is all to all on the opposite side of Butts Canyon from um, your property, um, that water will be the first developed. There is also some groundwater that has been used in the past from, in Napa County to supply um, Upper Bone Reservoir. And that groundwater is able to be at least partially offset by the additional surface water availability that was obtained in 2012 from the water board by the diversion of up to 1,600 acre foot of water from Buddha Creek. Overall, the project itself is anticipated to have its water demand was analyzed and is contained in a, an appendix to the EIR. And that analysis clearly identifies that there are ample resources without impacting off-site properties to allow the development of the potable water demands. As future development occurs, as was noted earlier by Ryan, subsequent EIR analysis will be required um, as specific plans for Phase Two of the development occur. As that is looked at, which gets closer to your area, a follow-up supply study will be um, reviewed and required by CEQA. Um, and so therefore, that will be completed at that time. But based on all the information available to date using USGS data, all the other data available to us, the information on the Calliope and Long Valley and all the other areas around us, it appears that there are no um, adverse effects from the proposed use of groundwater. Again, I will stress that the project itself also will be recycling and water from its uh, wastewater facilities and that will be used for irrigation in addition to the surface water to minimize any groundwater utilization for those purposes. Um, if there are any questions, I'll be glad to try to answer them, if, I believe Reed is also available if you have any more specific detailed questions.
Thank you Pete, I, I appreciate that very much. I hope that was, that answers some of the questions. Um. I know reading through that has certainly um, addressed a lot of the concerns that I had. So, let's see, do we have any more public comment? I'm not seeing anybody raise their hand. Okay, I think I'm gonna go ahead and close the public comment period and bring it back to the board.
Uh, Mr. Chair, uh, I think possibly you may wanna have Jake open it up to see if anybody else.
On the phones?
Yeah, doesn't, you know, they can't raise their hand or whatever, uh, just so we don't miss anybody.
Okay, um, that sounds good Bob. Uh, so we'll open it back up real quick, um, Jake, can you see, oh, I do see we have we have one more, can we open up to the phones first and see if we have anybody out there Jake?
Yes, I will, um, let's grab these phones real quick and I'll see if there's any interest out there. All right, I've uh, unmuted the phones in the meeting, if you'd like to speak, please state your first and last name.
Okay. Remains.
And, and real quick, um, I'm just gonna unmute the, the entire floor here. And um, I'm gonna follow that up with a full mute um, and we'll see if there's any interest out there, just, just to see if anyone's not able to raise their hand and communicate to me.
Okay.
All right, uh, I've unmuted the floor, if you would like to make a comment, please state your first and last name. Okay.
Okay. Um, all right, I see Monica.
Yes, so, uh, Monica, it looks like your mic is still open, um, can you just give me a sound check real quick?
Yes, hi, this is Monica Rosenthal again.
Yes, we hear you.
Thank you. Um, I, one thing I wanted to state that uh, that I was hoping I was gonna be part of the meeting at the very beginning and I would have stated it at the beginning, but um, just for your information and for us along, um, I wanted to let you know that the, you know, because I know at the last meeting, you had scheduled two days and I think you were really expecting a lot more public input as you are now, also, you know, searching for public input and it's, it's not forthcoming. Um, one of the issues may be that for instance, that the notice of the public hearing was mailed out to the residents that, you know, are within, I believe it's still 700 feet or so of the project site. Um, but this notice was mailed to the public um, regarding the June 18th meeting and in the notice, it states that on Thursday, June 18th at um, 9:05 in the Board of Supervisors chambers located at 255 North Forbes Street, Lakeport is where the meeting is held. It does not anywhere in this notice um, other than indicating that you could mail in comments, but in this notice that was mailed out, it does not indicate anything about a Zoom meeting or how to connect with meeting in light of COVID. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention because I do wonder, um, and I do appreciate Bob Malley for, you know, encouraging public comment, uh, which I think is very important in the process. Um, but, you know, I just wonder if, you know, these glitches as we go through this COVID situation is also um, you know, resulting in uh, less public involvement. Thank you.
Thank you Monica. I know that has been a concern of mine, could uh, perhaps um, Legal want to address this, Nicole or um, Scott, do you have any comments on this?
We're, we're gonna do, go ahead.
I can't, uh, this is Nicole, Chair.
Yes.
Um, and I, I can't comment on um, what notices actually went out. Um, but um, as far as I'm aware, the uh, notice included not just posting the agenda and the information on the agenda at various locations, but posting in the newspaper as well and um, and sending out the notices also to the number of parties that have property connecting to the project. Which is what's required.
Is there anything about, I meant not saying about the Zoom meetings or what, whatnot? Looks like Mark must be looking up something there.
Correct.
I will say, I do appreciate the applicant, uh, your quick, timely response to everything that has been brought up and certainly you're thorough. You're thoroughly addressing each issue too, that's, that's been really, really great.
And thank you very much, this is Catherine Philippakis, if while Mark is looking, I could speak. Um, I do want to point out that the hearing was noticed in accordance with the county's administrative procedure as for all hearings and as for all hearings that have happened since we went into the shelter-in-place order in March. So this is certainly not the first hearing. I also, it's my understanding that the county did accommodate some members of the public who attended the hearing at the county courthouse building. So if someone did by mistake not understand that there was also a Zoom option and went to the county, um, they were allowed to watch the hearing from that location and participate. So um, we've, we've certainly heard a lot from a lot of people. Um, there were, as you know, a lot of public comments and I think um, I understand that it's we're all operating in unusual circumstances. Um, but this was done very carefully and in accordance with the procedures that have been set up for this time and place, um, for all public hearings in Lake County.
Okay, thank you, um, and is that someone at the courthouse, was that, were there people in fact that did show up last week?
There is, I think, three people that showed up and they went up to our third floor and one of our staff members um, allowed them to use one of their one of the devices and brought them into conference room C, so they're able to adequately
Okay.
hearing and comment.
That's good to know, I, I did not know that last week and I'm actually pleased to hear that.
Chairman Sunrun, I also understand that uh, the notice that gets sent out uh, has a link to the agenda and on the agenda is the information regarding the Zoom meeting. So while the, the notice that goes out referenced uh, the location of the meeting being at the courthouse, there was a link to the agenda and the agenda has the, the Zoom link information.
Okay, thank you Scott.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, John.
This is John, um, I, I know Monica, Monica's a good friend and her point is well-taken, but I'm satisfied that all the standard and good faith efforts, especially in the COVID era, were undertaken in order to provide notice for our meetings related to this project.
Okay, thank you John. Um, Christina, Bob, um, Eagle, and you, do, either of you care to weigh in on this?
Uh, this is Bob Malley, I um, I believe that we have followed uh, uh, I know it's difficult circumstances with the COVID-19 and all this and all the uh, uh, situations that have forced to close these meetings, but uh, I believe that uh, we followed all the uh, uh, all the requirements that the county has put forth for the Board of Supervisors meetings. And uh, I have to think that if it's okay for their meetings, then it's okay for ours.
Okay, I, I agree, I think we've done a lot, a lot to try and accommodate everybody and I certainly hope that everyone else feels that way. Um. So that being said, do we, what do we wanna, do we wanna take some actions on the agenda item? Or what does the board wish to do?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, John.
John, um, have we closed public input and if so, if there's um, further discussion amongst commissioners, fine, um, I'm also prepared at whatever point to um, offer some motions.
Okay, um, good point, I actually don't think I did close it officially after reopening it again. Uh, and so I'd like to go ahead and actually do that right now. And bring it back, if anyone else on the board has any more questions or comments before somebody wishes to make a motion.
Um, this is Christina, um, I um, I also want everyone to understand, like, this is streamed on Facebook and since we do have, we've had multiple meetings on Zoom, I think that um, anybody who is watching on Facebook or has to, wants to comment or wants to notify us, there's plenty of options, we're doing the best that we can. Um, and I think we do a good job. And I'll also, I will also echo John, I think we have enough information, we've, um, we're all very educated on the agenda item that we're discussing and um, I'm ready when you guys are.
Um, okay, can uh, can you guys just hold on one second, please, I have somebody at my door.
Sure.
So if everyone could hold on, I'm sorry.
You could probably mute your thing.
William, it's, we got it.
Thank you.
Part of the public attending the meeting.
Wanted to say that, I really did. Okay, I'm so sorry about that, it was the water company. Um. Okay, so did we have any, any other questions or comments? Thank you for your comment Christina. Okay?
I have, I have nothing else to add at this time, Mr. Chair.
Thank you Bob.
Mr. Chair, I'm Commissioner Brown.
Go ahead.
Um, I, I definitely wanna uh, extend my thank you to the applicant and everybody for uh, allowing the extra week to review all the necessary documents to, to digest as best as possible all the information and I'm uh, currently satisfied with um, the, the time and I'm also ready to move forward.
John, I believe you were discussing the floor?
Sure, I'm sorry, I thought perhaps we'd lost Eagle there for a second.
Oh, that was him.
Yeah, if, if there's no further discussion, then I'm prepared to offer um, a series of motions. Uh, and there are quite a few, so I apologize for droning on for a bit. Mr. Chair, regarding the EIR, I move that the Planning Commission recommend the Board of Supervisors suitify the final environmental impact report, EIR 18-01 FEIR. Prepared for the Guanac Valley Mixed Use Plan Development Project has been completed in compliance with the California Environmental Quality Act CEQA and the state CEQA guidelines. in compliance with the California Environmental Quality Act, CEQA, and the state CEQA guidelines.
Okay.
I second Bob Malley.
Thank you, Bob.
Uh, Commissioner Huss.
Yes.
Commissioner Malley.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Yes.
Commissioner Price.
Yes.
Commissioner Sunrum.
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, John.
Regarding the General Plan Amendment Approval, I move that the Planning Commission recommend that the Board of Supervisors make a motion of approval for the General Plan Amendment, GPAP 18-01, applied for by Lotus Land Land Investments Holdings, Inc., and further direct staff to prepare a proposed resolution based on the following findings. The proposed General Plan Amendment is in the public interest as it supports implementation of the Middletown Area Plan and policies of the General Plan, especially related to economic development and support for economically diverse job base, innovative resort residential communities, agritourism opportunities and resort-related uses, while at the same time protecting significant agricultural lands, open space and natural resources of the area, as discussed in the staff report dated packet dated June 18, 2020, and the supplemental staff report dated June 22, 2020. An environmental impact report pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act was prepared for the General Plan Amendment.
Thank you, John.
My second. Malley.
Thank you, Bob.
Commissioner Huss.
Yes.
Commissioner Malley.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Yes.
Commissioner Price.
Yes.
Commissioner Sunrum.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mr. Chair.
Yep, John.
Regarding the zoning text amendment, I move that the Planning Commission recommend that the Board of Supervisors make a motion of approval for the zoning text amendment, AM 18-04, applied for by Lotus Land Land Investments Holdings, Inc., based on the following findings. The proposed zoning text amendment is found to be consistent with the Lake County General Plan as proposed to be amended and the Middletown Area Plan as outlined in the Environmental Impact Report, the staff report packet dated June 18, 2020, and the supplemental staff report dated June 22, 2020.
I'll second.
Hey, thank you, Christina.
Commissioner Huss.
Yes.
Commissioner Malley.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Yes.
Commissioner Price.
Yes.
Commissioner Sunrum.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, John.
Regarding rezoning, I move that the Planning Commission recommend that the Board of Supervisors make a motion of approval of this rezoning, RZ 18-01, applied for by Lotus Land Land Investments Holdings, Inc., based on the following findings. The proposed rezoning is found to be consistent with the Lake County General Plan as opposed to be amended, as proposed to be amended, and the Middletown Area Plan as outlined in the Environmental Impact Report, EIR, staff report packet dated June 18, 2020, and the supplemental staff report dated June 22, 2020.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Commissioner Huss.
Yes.
Commissioner Malley.
You're on mute, Bob.
I'm sorry, yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Yes.
Commissioner Price.
Yes.
Commissioner Sunrum.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Bob.
Regarding the
John, I'm sorry.
Regarding the General Plan of Development, I move that the Planning Commission recommend that the Board of Supervisors make a motion to approve the General Plan of Development, GPV 18-01, applied for by Lotus Land Land Investments Holdings, Inc., subject to the conditions and with the findings and reasons listed in the Environmental Impact Report, EIR, staff report packet dated June 18, 2020, and the supplemental staff report dated June 22, 2020.
Elevate me.
I'll second.
Commissioner Huss.
Yes.
Commissioner Malley.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Yes.
Commissioner Price.
Yes.
Commissioner Sunrum.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mr. Chair, regarding the major use permit, I move that the Planning Commission recommend that the Board of Supervisors find that major use permit, UP 18-49, applied for by Lotus Land Land Investments Holdings, Inc., does meet the requirements of Article 15, Section 15.7, and Article 51, Section 51.4 of the Lake County Zoning Ordinance, and grant the major use permit for the Gwinoc Valley Mixed Use Plan Development Project, subject to the conditions and with the findings listed in the Environmental Impact Report, EIR, staff report packet dated June 18, 2020, and the supplemental staff report dated June 22, 2020.
I'll second. Commissioner Huss.
Yes.
Commissioner Malley.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Yes.
Commissioner Price.
Yes.
Commissioner Sunrum.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, John.
Regarding the tentative subdivision map, I move that the Planning Commission recommend that the Board of Supervisors make a motion and find the tentative subdivision map, SB 18-01, applied for by Lotus Land Land Investments Holdings, Inc., is in conformity with the provisions of the Subdivision Map Act and Chapter 17 of the Lake County Code, and upon that basis, the Board of Supervisors approve said map, subject to the terms and conditions, and with the reasons and findings of approval listed in the Environmental Impact Report, EIR, staff report packet dated June 18, 2020, and the supplemental staff report dated June 22, 2020.
I'll second. Thank you. Scott, you on that one, Bob? Commissioner Huss.
Yes.
Commissioner Malley.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Yes.
Commissioner Price.
Yeah.
Commissioner Sunrum.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mr. Chair, regarding the development agreement, I move that the Planning Commission recommend that the Board of Supervisors make a motion of approval for the development agreement, DA 18-01, applied for by Lotus Land Land Investments Holdings, Inc., based on the reasons and findings of approval listed in the Environmental Impact Report, EIR, staff report packet dated June 18, 2020, and the supplemental staff report dated June 22, 2020.
Second.
Commissioner Huss.
Yes.
Commissioner Malley.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Yes.
Commissioner Price.
Yeah.
Commissioner Sunrum.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mr. Chair.
No.
Regard, regarding the Middletown Offsite Housing, um, rezoned, I move that the Planning Commission recommend that the Board of Supervisors make a motion of approval of this rezoning, RC 20-011, and approve the proposed rezoning applied for by Lotus Land Land Investments Holdings, Inc., based on the following findings. The proposed zoning text amendment is found to be consistent with the Lake County General Plan as proposed to be amended and the Middletown Area Plan as outlined in the Environmental Impact Report, EIR, staff report packet dated June 18, 2020, and the supplemental staff report dated June 22, 2020.
I will second.
Thank you.
Commissioner Huss.
Yes.
Commissioner Malley.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Yes.
Commissioner Price.
Yeah.
Commissioner Sunrum.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mr. Chair, regarding the tentative subdivision map approval, I move that the Planning Commission recommend that the Board of Supervisors make a motion and find the tentative subdivision map, SB 20-01, applied for by Lotus Land Land Investments Holdings, Inc., is in conformity with the provisions of the Subdivision Map Act and Chapter 17 of the Lake County Code. And upon that basis, the Board of Supervisors approve said map, subject to the following terms and conditions, and with the reasons and findings of approval listed in the Environmental Impact Report, EIR, staff report packet dated June 18, 2020, and the supplemental staff report dated June 22, 2020.
Second.
Commissioner Huss.
Yes.
Commissioner Malley.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Yes.
Commissioner Price.
Yeah.
Commissioner Sunrum.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mr. Chair, regarding the major use permit, I move that the Planning Commission recommend that the Board of Supervisors find that major use permit, UP 20-02, for the Community Clubhouse, applied for by Lotus Land Land Investments Holdings, Inc., does meet the requirements of Article 51, Section 51.4, and Article 27, Section 27.11F of the Lake County Zoning Ordinance, and grant the major use permit, UP 20-02, subject to the conditions and with the findings listed in the Environmental Impact Report, EIR, staff report packet dated June 18, 2020, and the supplemental staff report dated June 22, 2020.
Second.
Commissioner Huss.
Yes.
Commissioner Malley.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Yes.
Commissioner Price.
Yeah.
Commissioner Sunrum.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Finally, Mr. Chair, regarding general plan policy motions, I move that the Planning Commission recommend that the Board of Supervisors make a motion to amend general plan policy, LU 6.12 of Chapter 3, Section 3.9, Economic Development of the Lake County General Plan, because it is in the public interest as it supports implementation of the Middletown Area Plan and policies of the General Plan, especially related to economic development and support for economically diverse job base, innovative resort residential communities, agritourism opportunities and resort-related uses, while at the same time protecting significant agricultural lands, open space and natural resources of the area, as further presented in the supplemental staff report dated June 22, 2020, and to include the following section, quote, 6.12.3, the provisions of 6.12.1 and 6.12.2 shall not apply to the special study area of the Middletown Area Plan, close quote.
I'll second. Commissioner Huss.
Yes.
Commissioner Malley.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Yes.
Commissioner Price.
Yeah.
Commissioner Sunrum.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Chairman Sunrum.
Yes.
Uh, I'll go ahead. Since, uh, we didn't have this included in, uh, in your packet, I will go ahead and read that the applicant or any interested person is reminded that the zoning ordinance provides for a seven calendar day appeal period. If there's a disagreement with the Planning Commission, an appeal to the Board of Supervisors may be filed. The appropriate forms and applicable fee must be submitted prior to 5:00 PM on or before the seventh calendar day following the commission's final determination.
Okay, thank you, Scott. Okay. Thank you to Lotus Land Development and, uh, everyone with the Maha Project.
And thank you, Commissioners. I, I, uh, in closing, uh, of this item, I'd just like to again acknowledge the staff and the tremendous effort that's been put forward for this project. Uh, acknowledge, uh, Ryan and her entire team with AES and, and the spectacular work that they've done. And, and also I'll share, uh, my congratulations and thanks to the developer. Uh, this has been, uh, a, a heck of a project. It's been a lot of work and, um, uh, it's, it's been an honor and a pleasure to, to be associated with it. So thank you very much and, uh, we'll move it on to the next step. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Sunrum, if, uh, perhaps a five-minute break, uh, for us to, uh, kind of move some stuff around and, and, uh, get Victoria framed up for her presentation if, if you'd be so nice.
I was actually gonna suggest that anyway, so thank you, Scott. Um, is the commission okay with taking a five, let's say a five-minute break?
Certainly.
Okay, let's make it a six-minute break. We'll come back at, uh, 10:50. All right.
The project applicant is Palazona Oz LLC. So I'm gonna begin with a permit request and I'm going to talk about site description with site pictures. And I'm gonna conclude the presentation with, um, analysis and recommendations. So the applicant is requesting approval of major use permit for retail sales of tested and approved cannabis product. Um, currently, uh, the address is 8466 Lake Street in Lower Lake and APN number is 12-54-25. The zoning is a C1 local commercial and the propose, there's a existing structure with approximately uh, 2,300 square feet and the proposed retail sales of cannabis will be at the existing structure. So designated general plan land is local commercial and approximately the partial size is of 1.61 acres. According to the Lake County GIS map, the, uh, block zone is X indicating moderate and minimal hazard. These are the proposed site plan and landscape plan. Um, there is a main access from the Lake, uh, street and there will be six-foot wooden fences in northeast and south. Also, 10-foot planted areas are proposed along the west property line. So I'm gonna share a couple of photos, uh, for deliver, deliver the what's going, what's current situation of the property. And, uh, I'd like to share, uh, some kind of current conditions with all of you. The existing building on the right side you see on the screen is, uh, will be utilized for the project. And you're, we're looking, um, northeast toward the project. And the second photo kind of shows the detailed information of the front facade with the main entrances. And the last photo depicts the north side of the property. So project analysis. Based on the, uh, Lake County Zoning Ordinance, Article 18, Section 8.5, retail sales of cannabis are permitted use in a C1 local commercial upon issuance of major use permit. And staff review Lake County General Plan, Lower Lake Area Plan, zoning ordinances, and determine that this project is consistent with, uh, all of them. According to California Environmental Quality Act, CEQA, uh, the project is categorically exempt under Class 1, Section 15, 301, due to, uh, minor interior alteration and of the existing structure, and there's no expansion of square footage. Um, here's more information about categorical exemption, Class 1, as you can see. So, um, based on zoning ordinance, Article 51, major use permit findings are, um, conformed and staff has determined that the project complies with developmental standard and its all qualification of the permit. And, uh, conditions of, conditions of approval has been drafted and anyone who's interested in can receive upon request. So therefore, staff recommends the planning commission take the following action. Approve a major use permit, UP 19-50, and adopt categorical exemption, CE 19-96. Thank you.
Thank you.
Listen, I will turn it over to you, Chair Sunrum, and the commission, if there are any questions or discussion.
I have a question. This is Commissioner Hess. Um, the types of products that will be sold, um, the, I suppose it's like at the other dispensaries in the county, it's edibles and smokables and I understand this would be all prepackaged material?
Yes, based on the applicant's, uh, project description, all the products are packaged and then tested and approved.
Thank you.
I have a question, uh, Mr. Chair, if I might.
Sorry, I was on mute. Go ahead, Bob.
Uh, I do not see, uh, a plan for parking, uh, for ingress and egress from the, uh, Lake Street Road, and I have several other issues, but, uh, first, let's, uh, address the, uh, parking. Will it be paved? Uh, how many, how many, uh, if they're gonna have six employees, how many parking spots are they gonna have? And will it include, uh, the handicapped requirements and all of the other, uh, things that other business had, businesses have to have before they open up?
May I address? So the applicant has proposed site plan. Uh, I don't know if you have a chance to get the slide with the landscape site plan. There are nine proposed parking spaces, including one ADA parking spot. And all the, uh, parking area, areas will be paved. And there's a one driveway on the west, uh, property line, access from Lake. Uh, Lake Street.
Yes.
Yeah.
It's page, page four on the, on the site plan attachment.
Is is the access from Lake Street or from Bryant Road to the parking?
Currently, there's access from Bryant Road, but the applicant proposed the access from Lake Street. Because the northern part, other area of the property is R one and then east. Uh, also planned development residential, according to zoning ordinance, we recommend applicant to have a six. Uh, feet wooden fences and also applicant proposed ten uh planted area uh on the west part of the property. So they switched the access road from Bryant to Lake.
A planted area, what, what is? What are you talking about, a planted area?
So if you look at the slide with the proposed site plan and proposed landscape area, there's like green. Dense vegetation along the west property line.
Yes.
Yeah, those are the recommendation from uh. Uh, planning division and we recommend five foot planted area, but actually the applicant proposed ten foot planted areas.
Okay, and those are like arboretives or hedge row or something, is that?
Yes, I I can't really.
There it is, yep.
But those area, the, there's a legend saying that there's a type of plants.
Oh yeah, I see it there.
I can provide if you want a high quality resolution of landscape plans.
Bob, are you following along with this, can you see what we're talking about, Bob?
Yes, I see it.
Okay, does that answer your questions?
No, because if they have six employees and nine parking spots. That doesn't compute to me somehow. And and they, and they were report, staff report said that. There was a minimum of six employees, I believe, that's what I read.
Um, Commissioner Malley, may I jump in and help um try to address the question?
Yes.
So this is Top Heart, I'm a deputy director, um, it's gonna be six employees at peak shift. And so my interpretation is that that's. At the height of their operations, but they probably won't have. More than one or two at any given time, and I believe we also have the applicant on the line so they can jump in as well. Um, if we need additional clarification and per the code, I believe that is more than enough parking spaces with one um eighty. Eighty accessible and then it'll be eight regular accessible, eight, eight non-accessible spaces. And so these staff is is shaking their heads yes, so I believe that is sufficient in that one. Uh, even if they do have six employees at the same time, I I still believe that will be sufficient per the code.
Okay, I personally, I have a problem with the location of the building itself. It's on a well-traveled. Uh, bike and walk and drive lane that. Uh, brings students from. The Cash Creek Apartments and from the surrounding homes on Tishatang and all over the area. Uh, they have to walk past that store twice a day. Uh. It, it would be, it would much better serve the community if it was in the downtown commercial. Area than uh this spot and uh. Uh, you know, the. With parking, parking issues aside, I, you know, I think the mixture of. More traffic and kids walking and. Uh, playing, you know, twice a day, back and forth across, you have two schools uh. To the south of that business, uh, Lower Lake Elementary and. Uh, Lower Lake High School and then there's other uh schools surrounding the high school, which Carlay and and. Uh, Blue Heron, uh, there's, you know, there's just a lot of uh. Traffic back and forth, they're all within a mile, uh. And the only way, e- even though it mentions highway fifty three. It's, it's a mile in either direction uh to get to the highway from that location you. You cannot get on highway fifty three directly from there, uh. Uh, I just think it's uh, i- i- it's a terrible choice to uh put a store like this. Uh, uh, in this position.
Thank you, Bob, um, I, I actually agree with Bob on those points. Uh, and also something I see as another issue is the hours of operation. Um, nine A M to nine P M, seven days a week, I mean, I don't know. Many businesses that are open till nine P M, seven days a week. As well as, I believe it's mentioned that deliveries will be taken place up until nine P M, seven days a week, so. Um. I would think we would need some, some more strict restrictions on that as well.
Um, Chair, if I may respond to those concerns?
Sure.
Um, I I appreciate your concerns and I thank you for sharing them with you, they are very valid. Um, however, I respectfully submit that I believe the applicant has provided some concessions and then there are ample conditions of approval. Um, I think the underlying, and please correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the underlying concern is also that there might be. A mismatch of uses in this area, um. This, this, this property is zoned for commercial and um. There is vacant parcels surrounding it, except for the one parcel immediately adjacent, but then going. In this direction and in this direction this way, um, they're vacant, correct? Um, the parcels to the north of the par- project is R one, parcels to the east are zone P D R. Parcses to the south are zone suburban rural reserve and the parcels to the west are zone open space. Um, so that's this one, which is farming grazing, there's a recycling business over here and then this one is the one residential property. Um, as far as security concerns, um, I don't think they were explicitly highlighted, but we believe that. Uh, providing the security measures that the applicant proposed, which is the security cameras, the extended um. Landscaping plan which provide a visual barrier and then the fence that they're also gonna be provide and then that outdoor lighting plan, we believe provides. Sufficient, excuse me, sufficient security, um. And then as far as the traffic, um, you are right, you did highlight that there is gonna be an increased amount of traffic. Um, with the deliveries, but we feel that we provided some mitigations with the majority. Of the deliveries being provided in the passenger delivery trucks, so you won't be seeing semi trucks. Coming down this residential neighborhood, um, there would be more of those cargo vans that you might see um from like um. Oh gosh, I can't think of an example right now, but you know, those, they're a little bit bigger than a panel van, but then a little bit smaller than a U P S truck van. Um, so we believe that those have been sufficiently mitigated. And I believe those were the only concerns that I heard and then I, as I said, I believe we have the applicant on the line as well, um, if you would like to unmute yourself.
Well, I think I still, you know, our, our jobs as, as planning commissioners are to. Um, you know, regulate the best use of of, of properties. Following the zoning ordinances that are in place and though. I, you know, though it is zoned commercial, when you look at the type of commercial businesses. There are certainly some that are more suitable in this close proximity to a school zone. And let alone with the concerns of, of the school age children who will, who already heavily traverse this area. And I think that is part of Bob's concern. Um, and you can correct me if I'm wrong on that, Bob, but I, that's kind of my concerns as well on that.
Chair, can I comment as well?
Please.
Um, I, I wanna echo Commissioner Malley's concerns. Um, prior to myself moving um into District Three, I, I lived in the Cash Creek Apartments.
Uh, could you do this yourself, please?
Yes, I, I lived in the.
That's Eagle, that's Commissioner Brown speaking.
Yeah, and so. So my, my children actually attended Lower Lake Elementary, walked to school. Um, and I'll say that thi- this road is heavily impacted during the school hours. Um, pickup time, two o'clock to two thirty, you have children crossing the road, you have the crosswalks. Um, controlling, traffic controlling and the, the road can come to a standstill for twenty five to thirty minutes. And I think it's important, again, that we acknowledge the amount of foot traffic. That is gonna be coming through this area and also the, the age of the children that are, are walking this, this path. Um, I, I feel like the, the area is currently unsafe for the children to walk through here, but there is a um. A concern in terms of the amount of children, I don't see anything that talks about. Um, any type of study or looking at how many people are actually walking on this road to school. And so for myself, um, that's a major concern. Um, I know. South coming around the residential area, there's a pretty sharp turn coming around to where. Um, before you hit that little straightaway where the closed uh building is at. Um, there's a lot of traffic that comes through there and it's definitely an area that I have concern for safety. And so I, I think that needs to be addressed.
Mister Chair, this is John.
Yes, go ahead, John.
Bob Malley knows that area better than anybody else on the commission and, and, and I understand what my colleague. On Commissioner Brown is saying, but I'm wondering, just to play devil's advocate for a moment, then what kind of commercial business would be appropriate there? Whether it's selling cannabis products or anything else, if that's a concern, um, why would anything commercial be appropriate there?
Well, for me, I mean, you know, um. If you were selling, I mean. I suppose it would depend on, and Commissioner Brown brings up a good point on some kind of study. As far as the impacts of the traffic or the type of traffic. As opposed to what is already there, it may be pertinent, um, you know, because certainly, just because it's a cannabis. Operation, there's still maybe other commercial businesses that may not be suited, that may attract too much vehicle traffic. To deem it unsafe or to add to the unsafeness of an already unsafe situation.
And just may, may I jump in, Chair?
Yes, go ahead, tomorrow.
Um, we're talking about the commercial uses allowed within this zone. And we pulled up the full list, uses permitted subject to first attainment of major use permit. Um, retail fuel cells, bars when not exceeding twenty five hundred square feet, and this is section eighteen point five. Uh, retail plant nurseries, including outdoor storage, sales of display, game room, amusement arcades. Those uses permitted in C one with a major use permit and retail sales of cannabis.
Then like uses permitted, just for some general idea, like what's allowed by, by right generally, is. Retail sales of food, dry goods, pharmaceutical flowers, bait, tackle, art, craft supplies, studios, books, magazines. Personal services such as barber and beauty shops, laundry mats, cleaners, health clubs. Minor repairs such as jewelry, shoes and food services that are cafes, food shops. And then professional services like tax or real estate offices and then some medical offices are just some of the uses that are allowed by right.
Um, as far as in, street improvements, Mark. I know certainly in a city of Lakeport, um, certain businesses, when they go to upgrade their. Uh, it looks like Bob was kicked off and is coming back in. I'm gonna go ahead and let him in here.
I just did.
Okay.
Mr. Malley, are you there?
Are you back with us, Bob?
It does take a moment.
Okay. Um, now I forget what I said, oh, um, Mark. Or somebody at planning staff, as far as what are the general requirements for upgrading the. Um, infrastructure along the public side of the properties. As far as sidewalks and that kind of stuff. Um, as far as in other businesses, I mean, any other business that would go. That would go in or apply for permits, or is that something that is? That the cities do that is different than the county's requirements? You know, as far as the city of Lakeport or the city of Clear Lake.
I know in past projects, they, when there was like a brand new building going up, we would, you know, hang on agency comments. It could possibly be improvements for sidewalks, road improvements, driveway improvements. Um, from what I recall and have seen in the past projects for buildings that are existing. That are there, it's just generally improving the site, maybe improving the entry point, exit point to today's requirements and. Improving those things as like landscaping and and lighting, but I don't recall um seeing or or requiring an individual to. Install sidewalks um within existing, within, when a structure is existing.
Well, I know that it's something that is, that is done in Lakeport. Um, but like I say, I know that's city jurisdiction, not county.
Correct.
Um, and especially with the high traffic, especially with Commissioner Brown having lived there and experienced it firsthand and. And Bob, I think probably grew up around that area. Um, Bob, looks like he's raising his hand, is that, you wish to speak there, Bob?
I had to give him co-host again, sorry about that.
Gotcha, okay.
Yeah, I dropped out, I'm sorry, uh, I was out of the meeting for a couple of minutes, but.
Sorry about that, um, were you in when Commissioner Brown spoke?
Yes.
Okay. Um, so are your, your concerns are primarily the foot traffic as well as the proximity to the school, is that correct, Bob?
Uh, that's, yeah, that's the, the major part of my concerns, uh. Somebody had asked, just as I lost, somebody had asked, uh. What kind of things I could imagine that would be okay for that commercial site?
That was me, that was me, Bob.
Yeah, I, uh, to answer that question. You know, the reason it's a commercial site is because the county told. Uh, I believe it was the Rebecca's that used to have, that, that was their meeting hall. And when they remodeled their meeting hall, uh, they were, they. Had to uh. Change uh to go along with county requirements because it was what they called a commercial building, so. Uh. So for the original use, if, if it went back to another service club or became some kind of a, uh. You know, I, I could see a daycare or something like that, uh, you know, would be of use, but. I, I, I don't see any reason at all to have. A single store in the middle of nowhere. That's got heavy traffic, uh, school traffic back and forth in front of it all day long. Five days a week, when we're not, of course, in the COVID situation. Uh. And adding to that, uh. Uh, the possibility of, uh. Uh. The possibility of people not paying attention to the speeds that are posted there. Because I believe it's thirty and twenty five miles an hour all the way past the schools from that point, so, uh. Uh, you know, I. I don't know what else I can say other than the fact that it's just the wrong place for that kind of a business, uh. I- it doesn't belong in the middle of uh. That uh. Residential area, uh, even if it is zoned commercial, I, I think that. Uh, there are other, you know, there are other uses that would be better served for the community than. There are other, you know, there are other uses that would be better served for the community than uh. A uh cannabis shop, so.
So is this, Bob, um from your recollection, possibly would this have been a. Previously, uh like a non-conforming use? Or, I mean, it's prior use, original use?
I I would only be guessing, uh I don't remember the the particulars. I I know that at one time there was a different building there and they put the metal building up and uh. Uh but it was, uh you know, it was a service club, it was, they had breakfast and and things like that there, like the. Yeah, like, you know, like the other service clubs do, lions and uh and the elks and the rest of them, so uh. It it was never meant to be, uh well, certainly was never meant to be a cannabis club because at that time there was. No such thing, but uh i- it was never supposed to be a heavy-use retail space, I'm sure.
Right, thanks, Bob. Um I I am looking at some of the agency comments here, and there's one from Rob Fitzsimmons. Assistant Planner, and it's talking about. Um this being in an exclusion or not in an exclusion zone, but it apply, but this is a retail operation. But it is mentioning that this is the first one that's been processed, so we're pressing, setting a precedent here. So I think we need to really um closely regard our decision on this. On this project. As far as, you know, how it's gonna go for future projects similar to this in the future.
Definitely, um I'm I'm. Uh if I may, Chair?
Yes, Nicole.
Just real quickly on that um issue of setting a precedent, technically speaking, um each analysis of individual projects. Is unique to that particular project and the location of that project, so you wouldn't necessarily be bound by a decision you make now. Um having said that, though, it's important not to be wildly inconsistent. Um and to stay within the analysis that's presented and to determine whether or not you can. You individually as commissioners can um make the findings presented to you, and if you cannot make those findings presented to you based on the material in front of you. And to explain why you couldn't make those findings.
Okay. Thank you. So to my fellow commissioners, if uh whatever decision we make, we have to make sure we do have those specifics. Christina, did you, you were trying to speak?
Um yeah, I just wanted, I feel like we have a general idea of our feelings on it. I'm curious to find out what the public um input is, there's a couple of hands raised, looks like, um I'm kind of curious to to that point.
Okay, before we go to public, would uh any of the commissioners like to hear from any of the applicants or the main applicant?
I'd like to hear from the applicants, sure, and then perhaps um go to public comment after that, it might, it might affect the night, the night, the type of public comments we get.
I agree.
Okay, so who do we have from the representing the applicant? Does anybody know? Uh I'm actu- actually asking staff for clarification on this.
I I have a um some comments here, it looks like I have the person.
Is a Rick, a Rick Soreggi?
I saw a Rich or a Richard S name pop up on the screen.
I just unmuted him. Rick, are you there?
Yes, good afternoon, this is Richard Soreggi, the applicant.
Okay.
Hello, everybody.
Hello.
And then we also have Terry, who uh should be able to unmute themselves as well.
Okay. Um so Rick, would you wish to address some of the concerns that we have?
Yeah, I'll go over a couple of things, and then if there's any questions, um um. First, I want to say thank you, you know, for you know, for hearing from me. And what, I I just took some notes down while uh everybody was speaking about, you know, seemed like the traffic and the kids seemed to be. The biggest concern, the location of the property. Um I want to make it clear that there's going to be. No pictures, no signs, anything explicit what ki- what we're doing there for kids. You know, we're off the road, um and th- there's not gonna be big pot leaves or joints or anything like that. Um we are going to have security every hour that we are opened, which is required. By the state of California. Um we um. Our our se- our 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 security is well-present. I, myself and one of my business partners. Have over fifteen years' experience in the cannabis industry in California. We've worked in cities um where we are, some of the clubs are right next to. Um martial arts studios or dance studios, um because of the setbacks. And I can tell you that we're well-perceived in the cities, um letters of recommendations from the mayors and. City council members that we've worked with hand in hand. This will be our first time in a county, but we always want to work as a partner with. The local, the county or the city that we're gonna be working with, like we do with the state of California. Um so the increased security helps everybody as far as the kids, you know, if if you're worried about the kids coming in. Um and I want to also make it clear that we meet all all the setbacks. From schools, that's all set by the state of California and the County of Lake. All of our setbacks are well beyond what is required for our location and um for our um type of business, for the cannabis business. Um the uh. You know, we wouldn't even be, i- i- we promoted changing the access from Bryant Street to Lake Street. But we're willing to work with you if you think it would be better putting it back on Bryant Street. We're gonna be drastically improving the property. Um it's a um. So so uh making it more eye-pleasing and just improving the whole area. And that's just, that just follows our industry around, you know, the state of California, that. That our 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 presence of security with our cameras and, you know, the way we handle ourselves professionally is always well perverse. Uh well-taken by the city and um the residents. Um. When when you read some of the proposed uses that could be used in the area, there's uses there. That I believe would be a lot more traffic than what we're going to um. Draw in some of the other establishments that were mentioned of of the uses that this property is good for. So I I I really just, in my fifteen years' experience of doing this, um I just don't see the traffic as being a problem. I also wanted to mention that Jeff on here is one of our consultants that works with us, I don't know if he wants to be unmuted or not, but he might be able to throw. You know, to help you uh have a better understanding of us also.
Also, Rick, can I have some background I'd like to share with them, if that's possible?
Excuse me? Oh yeah, go ahead, Terry.
Hi, I'm Terry Larson, my husband and I are the owners of the property. And we acquired the property uh a week, actually a week before the Clayton fire. And luckily, we were not burned out, but immediately upon acquiring the building. We opened it up to all the fire victims, we provided furniture, clothing, food. Everything that anyone would need to recover from their experience with the Clayton fire, we were there for them. And we provided to them. In addition, we have provided meals for the homeless. We have always reached out and helped the community. That tradition will continue with our arrangement with Rick and his partners as well. We are a community-based organization, and we're interested in helping our community, not bringing it down. Now, owning that property, we have been able to observe the traffic that goes down that road from the schools. Every single day, we're there every day. In the last three years of our ownership, we have seen children in the morning walking, but not any more than. You know, twenty or thirty spread out in the mornings, the same amount in the afternoons. The corner that's there is a major problem, of course, that's not our property and it's not our problem. Our recommendation would be for the county to provide us a nice uh sidewalk for them across the street. So that they would have a safe place to go around that curve. I've been scared ever since we moved in there that one of the kids was gonna get hit. They're not gonna get hit in front of our place because we have a straightaway, but that curve is definitely a problem, and I would agree. That something needs to be done by the county to make it more safe. I also think that the uh entrance going in on Bryant would also be a much more uh secure and safe. Entrance for for anyone coming in the road, and um that in itself probably could be a very good uh fix on that. And um there's not children there twenty-four seven, okay, they don't go through there every day throughout the day. They go during the morning, they go in the afternoon when they get out of school, and there's not a lot of it. There's also the recycling center next door, and they bring in semi-trucks that kick dust up everywhere. You want to talk about hazardous, that's, in my opinion, very hazardous. So we want to be a part of the community, we want to bring to Lake County. The type of medicine and recreational products that will enhance people's lives. We're not looking to bring anybody down, we want to provide organic, we want to provide good quality. And um we feel that this is a good location because we have very few residential houses nearby. We have a farm behind us, which is acres and acres of land that no one goes on. And and in fact, we're, we only have housing right next to us, there's two houses. So as far as any risk that this would be to the community. Um they had, they used to have heavy metal shows when the Rebecca's Lodge was there. You had people drinking and driving by the hundreds going in and out of that place, okay? So it has been used in ways that would not be very considered very well over the years. And um this is going to be a very uh high-security, privacy fencing. The landscaping that they're talking about along Lake Street is actually existing trees of thirty feet tall, oak trees. And um and some walnut trees that provide a very good screen there, and then they're gonna fill that in with more landscaping. So no one is really gonna be able to see anything beyond that point. So we we also can put a turning lane if they want to keep the entrance on Lake Street. That would allow traffic to move over to the side and not cause any disturbances or the traffic at all. So that's a little background on who we are and what we're trying to do for the community, and I do hope that you would, you know, uh. Allow us to be able to go forward with this with this project, it will be beneficial to the community.
And I'd like to bring up one more point, if I may, that we, that somebody had a concern about.
This is Rick again?
Yes, this is Rick Soreggi. Yeah, yeah, so uh the delivery, um the delivery is gonna be maybe one or two vehicles. And um somebody was describing the vehicle, it is like, they they would be like a small. A tiny, like the Amazon trucks that they use, with the big cargo vans, but they're the smaller versions, the um. I have a few of them I, that we own for one of our other dispensaries. Um they're they're small little vans, they're gonna be taking orders um live, online, um and maybe delivering a few at a time. You know, we have vast training experience on how to handle the drivers, um uh the uh very professional, you know. We plan on trying to hire everybody locally from Lake County for our managers, um with uh. Room for um advancement through our company, so um and that's another thing, you know, like when T- Terry mentioned that. The cities that we're in now, we're very involved with the communities, you know, we we want to work with the communities. Um and be a a working partner with them, and more and more, we're not considered an outcast anymore. You know, we bring a lot of good things to the community, we help a lot of people. And um and that's what we want to do in Lake County, we want to be the premier, like we are in other cities. You know, place for people to get good quality advice and medicine when they need it.
Also, uh did want to clarify too, that the distance from the schools to our property is over a thousand feet, so. There are no crosswalks there, there are no children that cross over the streets, except to get away from that curve, which is a danger. But that's not on our property and nor is it near our property, so uh the risk to any children coming in that area would be very minimal.
And I'd just like to ask Jeff, Jeff, do you have anything that you'd like to add? He's probably muted.
Okay, sorry, um my computer just shut down on me, so I'm. I'm back now, I missed, I don't know, I missed, I missed some stuff there.
How much, how long were you gone? Did you miss Terry just spoke?
Yeah, I did not hear Terry at all.
I'm sorry. Is there, I just speak background on the on the property and what our com- uh commitment and also participation.
Right, okay, I did, I did hear you then, it was, it was Rick, when he started again, was when I was disconnected.
I was talking about the delivery vehicles, did you hear what I had to say about delivery?
I did not.
I was just, I was just, that that was somebody's concern about the deliveries and uh. We don't anticipate deliveries being huge, but we're probably gonna have one at the max, probably two vehicles. They are small um vans, like mini versions of what Amazon uses to deliver around it. Um panel vans that will have all the security things that are required by the state of California with tracking devices. You know, GPS, um lot storage, everybody's completely trained, we've got a training program with our fifteen years' experience. Um of being in the cannabis industry legally in the state of California. Um that we um, you know, we're well-versed on that with our training, and it's not gonna be big giant vans, and again, the vans are gonna be plain. In white van. Could be a pizza van, they could, you know, there, nobody's gonna know what's being delivered, and there's gonna be no signage on them, nothing saying what delivery or what it is.
Is the reasoning for being open so late at night?
I think that, I I think our reasoning was, is that. It's providing the access, and I think we, we, I think we based it on what um. Other dispensaries, not in the county, but in the city of Clear Lake and Lakeport, of their operating hours. I think we just based it on that, and it's within the state's guidelines, so we just went with that, and we'd be willing to work with you guys on that if you, you know. Most of, like, one of the other cities were open from nine AM to eight PM. Um so I don't know, you know, we we'd be willing to work with you on that if you wanted to make it a little earlier, from nine AM to eight PM. But it's within, we we just went by what was happening in other cities in Lake County. And I'd also like to mention that I've been a property owner in Lake County for over twenty years also, so I have a lot of, you know, I am very uh. I want what's best for the, for the, for the cities and the counties of Lake.
Well, having been a lifelong resident here, I can tell, but tell you from what I've seen growing up here and. Um I know other people have been around here a lot longer than me, um nothing is ever, nothing good has ever come of any of this stuff.
Okay.
Nothing good's ever come out of cannabis?
Oh my gosh, so you have a prejudice against it.
So do any of the other commissioners have anything before we open this up to public comment?
And and one other thing, just please, I'm sorry to interrupt, but the parking, um so one of the, somebody was concerned about the parking. We'd be willing to expand the parking if that makes you, if if that makes you feel better, like I said, we're willing to work with you. Um on the, on these things to make it good for everybody. I just want to bet that across, we want it to work for everybody, because I've seen. The a complete opposite about how cannabis helps people. I've worked for twenty years at the Veterans Home in Yountville, California, helping veterans get off of opiates with cannabis products. Which aren't killing them. Um that's just one thing that I've done, and I specialize working with elderly people, I'm sixty years old. I can't, my sister's a cancer survivor and I'm a cancer survivor, so I mean, we're here, you know, and I specialize. Working with the elderly, helping them get off of opiates, sleeping pills, addictive drugs. I I don't want to get into that now, but I just wanted to let you know, there's a lot of good that comes out of cannabis.
I've worked with cannabis patients for ten years and seen over two dozen people that have gone into remission for cancer. Using certain products that come from cannabis, so.
Mister Chair, we're, Mister Chair, we're moving far beyond the scope of the application before us. Appreciate the nature of this debate, but it is not relevant to this application.
Well, there's, there's prejudice there.
So again, were there any other commissioners?
Yes, I have some comments.
Is that Brown? Okay, please.
So so what I'm gonna say again is regardless of the business that's located in the facility, no, none of my issues with safety have really been addressed. In terms of the foot traffic, I've, like I said, I've lived in that area for years. I have family who live down Bryant. Bryant is one of the worst dirt roads in in the area. I think you would have to consider the homeowners who live on Bryant, if you're gonna talk about access on Bryant. Again, the the trees that are in front of the building do provide a barrier of sight for children, anybody, pedestrians walking on that side of the road. So again, my concern is for safety, pedestrian traffic, little kids on scooters, bikes, whatever it may be. And I I don't agree with the statement that there's not that many children walking on that road. I would agree, not all day, but during the high traffic times in the morning and after school, that road is canvas with children.
We're willing to do whatever is necessary.
Excuse me, excuse me, Commissioner Brown currently has the chair. Has the the floor, I'm sorry.
And and that will conclude my comment for this portion right now. And like I said, that's pretty much where where I'm at with the safety.
Any other commissioners have some?
Chair, send on, we're losing you, you're running out.
I am working on getting my computer back on here, so if you give me just a second.
Mr. Chair, I'll reserve any further comments until after our public input.
This is Bob Malley, I'll also reserve.
Jake, could you do what we did for the going up item where you unmuted the floor and asked if there was any public comment, if that pleases the chair?
I do have some interest for public comment at this time. I just don't have any, I was waiting direction from the chair.
I think, I think he's still having connection problems.
Yes, so do we want to move the meeting along and start public comment without him?
No, let's wait for Chair, send a room to join us, please.
Jake, do you see the Galaxy S eight that just came on? Can you maybe unmute that? It could be Dan possibly.
Could I address Mr., I think it was Mr. Brown's concern about security that he just brought up again, really quick?
No, not while the chair is is not present.
Okay.
He, he's, the chair chatted me and said that he is here.
Okay. Is he?
I'm sorry, okay, I see what's going on.
You see on the Galaxy S eight?
I gave you co-host again, Mr. Chair.
Okay, all right, I'm back, I'm sorry. I have bad connection issues up here. Okay, so I did hear all the commissioners saying that they are, would like to hear public comment at this time. And then so let's go ahead and do that. Let's open it up to public comment, please.
All right, so to begin, public comment, the, the first name that I have here is Becky Salado. I'll mute your mic, can you give me a sound check by stating your first and last name?
She's muted. There we go.
I think I'm unmuted now, correct?
Yes.
Yes, we hear you.
Thank you, I'm Becky Salado, I I'm currently the superintendent for Conackda Unified School District. And I just wanted to share on behalf of our Board of Trustees and and our school district, some concerns that we have. And and most of the commissioners, thank you, I think you've addressed many of our concerns. I, we have two schools located very close to this property. And our concern is really about any type of commercial property there. I, it is very close to Lower Lake Elementary School, where we have a little over seven hundred pre-K through seventh grade students who primarily live in that area and walk every day to and from school. And as you all know, there are already challenges on that road. As the students are walking down, we also have Lower Lake High School right there, where I have another nine hundred eighth through twelfth grade students. And a large portion of those students are walking to school. Our boundaries for busing for our younger students is they have to be a mile away and and for our older students, it's two miles away. So when you think about the students who are are attending Lower Lake Elementary, a great, a large proportion of those students will be walking or being driven in by parents who they are not busing. So we have a large concern about adding any type of commercial traffic into that area. When the road, the walkway for the students is 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 dangerous as it is with, without the extended traffic. And I think you've identified most of those concerns. I I really appreciate the commission's allowing us the time to share our concerns from the school district's point of view. Thank you.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that. Do we have some other people who wish to speak that you can?
Yes, we have one more person who has raised interest in speaking. I have a Monta home here. Oh, you were able to mute yourself. Okay, I requested you to mute yourself there. Confirm your first and last name.
Yes, Peter Schiffman, and actually, I'm the husband of Terry Larson. I apologize, I didn't know how to interject any comments here. I'd like to address Bryant Street. When we first moved and purchased this property, we were told by both the county and current residents on Bryant that that is a private road, not a county road. And I don't believe the residents of Bryant have discussed or don't have the financial ability to actually make complete improvements on that road. So it is very dusty, it does have some problems with that. So I can't, we can't correct that problem ourselves. I think the residents and the county need to get together and find out who actually owns that road and who is properly supposed to maintain it.
Thank you for some clarification on that. Does anyone else have any other public comments? We have somebody. Okay, I don't see anybody, so.
I don't have any more hands raised, nor do I have chat.
One on the phone, right, I see that.
And then it just look like we have people joined via phone, yes.
Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and close it to public comment, public comment. And I would like to apologize to the applicant for my comment earlier. It's probably well known that I'm not a proponent of this type of stuff. However, in my position on the planning commission, I am trying to look at all aspects as far as planning, zoning, and whether or not any type of business is appropriate for the location being proposed. So I just want you to be aware that I'm keeping an open mind as far as the fact that it is what it is, but it's, it is the location that is more concerning to me. So to Commissioner Brown's security issues, I mean, I, I agree with Commissioner Brown on on those and I'd like to see those addressed. You know, if we're gonna go forward, I would like to see some kind of sidewalks or something. And I don't know if that helps, Commissioner Brown, if that helps some of your concerns, if there were sidewalks required. Or if that's even something that that we can do.
Yeah, I just wanna say again, my my concern is for safety, not so much security of the business or the building.
Right, I, and I'm sorry, that's what I did mean was safety for the children.
Yeah, and so, so I think we need to look at any and all options. And definitely work with the applicant to either improve the the frontage or area where children be crossing in front of their property. Or looking at trying to have, you know, the children, I don't know how they select what side of the road they're gonna walk down based off of where they're living. But in my experience, I have seen children cross the streets without crosswalks, so that's a part of the concern on that road during the school hours. But I would like to hear from applicants on possible solutions that they would be willing to talk about.
Terry, could you let me, Terry, could you let me address him first, please?
Okay, sure, but I do have a suggestion on that as well.
Okay. Yes, we we really appreciate your concerns and and we take security for everyone, children, patients. Everything is always our biggest concern in this industry. In some of the bigger cities, like Vallejo and Santa Rosa, you know, the concern was, you know, our security guards, and I'm sure you're all aware of a black market for cannabis. And in order to get rid of the criminal market, the first thing we need to do is provide legal, regulated access. That's gonna help a lot of crime right there outside of the kids. So now, in this situation, our security guards have helped at the karate studios, like I mentioned earlier, where during the peak periods, when the kids are there, extra security, security guard watching the guards. If our security guards have to be crossing guards during the peak times and help the children cross the street and make sure it's safe, no problem. We've been working with our security, my security professionals for fifteen years. We've been together, our team is not only, is is the cannabis guys, we've got a legal team, we've got security team. You know, so if if they could help watch the entrance during the hours when kids are present, hey, that's a heightened time of security. They will be out there, we'll have somebody out there monitoring the kids, making sure that they're safe. If any of our, if anybody from, that comes, comes speeding down into us, they'll be warned or not given access to our establishment anymore. So if they gotta act as crossing guards to improve student safety during the times, no problem. That's just one of my suggestions and I'm sure we can come up with many more to make it work.
Yeah, so my suggestion on this is.
Could you just state your name real quick, please?
I'm sorry, this is Terry again, Terry Larson. The issue really for safety, in my opinion, is the curve. Because when you're walking to school and you're on our side of the road, you're coming on a blind curve where the people go forty-five, fifty miles an hour. We've almost been T-boned several times coming out of Bryant by people who do speed through that area, okay? This is without a dispensary. So what I would recommend, and I know this is not a simple solution, but it would be a solution that would solve both of the problems, not only of this child safety with the curve, but of our location. And that would be to put some kind of a crosswalk before the curve so that, on the school side, so they could cross over. Then we have a sidewalk that goes along the state property on Lake Street, past our place to Mistletoe, which I believe is the next street past our place, and completely bypasses us completely. That would be the the solution to the problem. But that's not a solution that we could pay to take care of because honestly, it really is not our property or our situation. Now, maybe the state would come in on it or something because that is state park property. And so maybe there might be a way to work with the state on this to resolve that problem. But that really is the safety problem, is that curve, more so than anything that we would be having at our location, honestly.
If I may, Mr. Chair, this is Nicole.
Yes, please, Nicole.
It sounds as if commissioners are concerned about a number of issues, including safety of of pedestrians and increased traffic from a business that had less traffic to a commercial business that will probably potentially have more. One option the commission may have is a motion to postpone this item to a future meeting and give staff direction to do an analysis, a sequoian analysis, on those two or potentially more, if you have more impact. And then they could provide, rather than a categorical exemption, they could provide mitigation for those issues.
Mr. Chair?
Thank you, Nicole. Yes, John.
I was, Nicole is actually channeling me. I I was going to suggest that there seems to be enough spillover to talk about, that a postponement of the item might make the most sense. Because regardless of how we might act on the mutual use permit, there is still the motion on a sequoian exemption as well. And regardless of how one feels on the use permit, I I would still be at least prepared to vote in favor of the categorical, categorical exemption. The applicant would have certain appeal rights in that case. Although, if there could be a further discussion on crossing guards, a crosswalk, expanded parking, slightly reduced hours, a fix using Bryant or another turn lane on Lake, that seems to me to be enough material to justify postponing any action today and seeing if we can come to a better outcome. I I know other, my colleagues might feel differently, but that's where I'm coming down at this point.
I, Dan, it's Christina. I totally agree. I I personally could not make a decision based on the gray area that we, you know, there's, there's a lot of things I feel that we could figure out and feel a lot better about making a decision and moving forward. But I I'm, I'm down to postpone.
Okay, Commissioner Brown or Malley, would you please weigh in?
This is Commissioner Brown. I would like to hear if Bob's available, what his thoughts are on postponement. Again, my, my only issue is is safety. And so if we were to to postpone to gather some more information, I think that would be beneficial. I would also like to hear from the school district again on possibly working to introduce crosswalks or other types of things that could possibly mitigate my concern.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Brown.
Yes, Commissioner Malley. I have several issues. I cannot support finding number one and I cannot support finding number three the way they are for us at this time. I also had a question. Is this business going to be strictly retail or is there to be consumption on site?
Strictly retail, they're saying, Bob.
I, all right. Yeah, I, that's, that's my problem then is I I do not support finding number one. In that it I I think it would be detrimental to the health, safety, morals, comfort, general welfare of the persons residing or working in the neighborhood. And under three, that the streets, highways and pedestrian facilities are not reasonably adequate to safely accommodate the specific proposed use. So that's where I'm at, but I am willing to postpone this. And if staff can come up with some changes to these findings, then we could talk about it at that time.
Okay, and who do we have there for staff?
You have me, um Tocar, Paul Thomas, Deputy Director, and Victoria Kim, the Planner assigned to this.
Okay, your your camera is
Oh.
Kind of skewed to the left there.
On the camera, wait, which one is it? Can you see me now?
Nope. There we go, getting there. There you go. Now we see you. A little bit, you're on the edge there. So if we if we were to postpone this, I guess um it would be determined on on suggestions that we make. So um would you work with the school district? Um the superintendent on in this discussion on what kind of mitigation measures we might be able to come up with?
Um we could totally, we, excuse me, gosh, we can definitely do that. Um and um
I guess it also comes down to what 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 are our legal jurisdictions on this as well?
Correct, that was uh I think that you read my mind, Chair. I stand that Highway fifty-three is um owned by the state and maintained by Caltrans. And we did send this out for a review to them.
This is this is actually off of Lake Street.
Correct. Oh, sorry, the nearest highway, yes, you're right. I'm sorry. The project is off of Lake Street and Bryan Road, so we would have to I I'm trying to choose my words here because I I don't know if we can necessarily push these uh proposed improvements to the applicant, but we can definitely do a deep dive into that and bring that to you all if we postponed it. So that would be definitely number three, and I think there was finding number one that was brought up as a question as well.
Right, uh article was a section fifty-one point four.
Okay. And and I just want to bring up too, there was a traffic analysis um on Lake Street completed in two thousand and sixteen, um which additionally led to staff proposing the categorical exemption. And that two thousand and sixteen traffic analysis rated Lake Street as a um level eight street um for level A service, uh basically that it could support um this level of traffic. But we would definitely bring that back to you all if you desire to postpone this item.
Did that traffic study include any of the pedestrian traffic?
That is a good question.
Or was that 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 traffic study, did that that take into account any pedestrian traffic or is that strictly um automobile?
I'm not sure, Chair, I will find out for you.
Okay. Um does some, do one of the board members wish to? I'm actually gonna turn to Bob or or Commissioner Brown to see which way you guys would like if 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 postponing this and doing and bringing in some of these other studies, is this gonna hopefully help or what are your feelings?
Well, I can't say that it won't help. Uh this is Commissioner Malley. I can't say that it will or won't help until I see what it is they come up with, but uh I'm willing to allow staff to work with the uh applicant to see what changes can be made so that this benefits the community.
Okay, um Commissioner Brown?
Yes, this is Commissioner Brown. Um and again, I just want to reiterate the my concern for safety under um findings of approval for number three. Um and I would definitely like to um have access to that traffic study um for review and also would encourage uh staff to work with the applicant and the school to discuss um other improvements or possible uh solutions.
All right.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, John.
Um I too would support a postponement. Um I think if if that's the direction we go, then the point should be to work with the applicant to see if there is a way to get TS and to persuade a majority of commissioners that it would make sense to go forward. If if that is not the intent, then I don't see any point in postponing. But I would support a postponement and an expanded conversation. Um from what I've heard from the applicants, uh they they have a connection locally, they have they're making good faith offers, in my opinion, and I do believe that uh cannabis dispensary and the unincorporated unincorporated part of the county makes sense. Uh so for all of those reasons, um I'd like to um postpone and see what more information, et cetera, can be developed.
Okay, um Nicole, if I could get you to answer on this. If we make a motion to postpone, should there be specific wording on as far as direction we give staff?
You could begin the motion to postpone by saying Mr. Chairman, I move to postpone the question until, and then you list the particular date, maybe staff can assist with what date would be which next meeting would be best um for a timeframe to give them a chance to answer the questions and work with the applicant. But I don't, I mean, you can add language if you wish uh to direct staff to look at those specific things that you had re just just discussed. I assume that's what you're referring to is the items you just outlined.
This is Commissioner Malley. Uh I don't want to make it da- uh date specific because I want uh staff to be able to address these uh situations uh with the applicant wholly to make sure that we come up with the best possible uh remedy if 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 one is able to be uh to be found, so uh
That too is an option. You can do that. The um the difference between the two motions would be that if we if we move an I if you post vote to postpone an item to a future meeting that has no date, um then it becomes a brand new item on that agenda and it is noticed as if it were a new item. Whereas if you postpone to a specific date, um then the notice rules change. But other than that, as far as what the commissioners are required to do, it's the same. You you simply move to postpone the item and then take a vote.
Okay, um then my next question would be I guess my first question is there kind of a consensus on a a motion to postpone? Is that where we're leaning?
If I may, um the consensus would be the vote, so
Well, well, because I'm one, okay, alright, I'll just go ahead and ask staff then. Um the issues that we're looking at, do you feel if we say a month or two months, if we give a date specific, do you feel you would be able to meet that date and what would you be looking at for a timeframe?
Just pulling up my calendar right now to look at it, um
Cause otherwise, we we would go ahead and postpone it to a non-date specific, which like Nicole says, then it becomes a new item.
Could we, if we postponed it to a non specific date, and then if we brought back a recommendation for staff to put it, so if we say today, non-specific date, and then let's say our next meeting, we brought back a recommendation to bring it back at the twenty-third, Nicole, could we do that? Does that make sense?
I'm sorry, I didn't I didn't get that last half of it, so we should postpone to a future to a future meeting and then
And then if we um, so if if the commissioners voted to postpone it to a non-specific date, and then if staff brought back a recommendation at our next regularly scheduled meeting, which is the live night, to bring it back at a specific date, could we do that?
Um I, well, with all of our restrictions on on um noticing, for example, if it's a non-specific date voted today, I don't think we'd be able to meet the notice requirements for the, we might not be able to meet the notice requirements for the next special meeting, but it's possible.
No, I don't
Well, I think
That's not
In the next meeting.
Yeah, no, I think what she's asking Nicole is is if we just say today to, we don't give a specific date. But then at either the next meeting or the following meeting, then staff staff comes forward saying that they have, they were able to get the information they needed, and now we can schedule it to a future date from there? Or is that kind of a moot point on that?
Well, you would make the motion today to postpone to a future date n- uh non-specific, and then um that ends it for today. So the next time the agenda item comes up, it will be treated exactly as if it were a new agenda item, so it would be noticed the same, it would be put on the agenda. It would not be treated as if it were a postponed item or a tabled item in that respect. It would it would not, for example, be like we dealt with the Guanac project. It would be a whole wholly treated entirely as if it were a new item. So um staff, if the commission chooses to postpone to a non-specific date, um then it doesn't necessarily matter when staff brings it back. They could bring it back at the next regular meeting, they could bring it back at the meeting that follows that. Um but they would have to notice it and um agendize it as if it were a entirely new item that hadn't been before the commission.
Sure, okay, I think I understand. Thank you for that clarification, Nicole. So with that, our next regularly scheduled meeting is the ninth, which as Nicole pointed out, we would not be if we continued it to the ninth, we would be okay with noticing. If we do not continue it and we bring it back as a brand new item, we would, the earliest we could bring it back to be responsive to Brown Act and the record bees um deadlines for noticing is for the
Twenty-third?
Yes, the twenty-third. I'm just trying to make sure if we have enough days, because we essentially have to do seventeen days now for noticing.
Well, I think we can we can postpone it to the twenty-third.
Oh.
Correct, Nicole?
Okay.
Right, so we can postpone it.
For, yeah, the motion could be to postpone to the specific meeting date.
Right, my just my question to staff was, is that gonna give you enough time?
Right.
Or do we need to go into August or, yeah? So that's that's solely up to staff. I mean, if you can do it in three weeks, then we can postpone it to then.
It might take time because they have to draft entire mitigating measures, and I don't know how long they're gonna take. And I have to incorporate my staff report, so I, so I'm talking to Victoria right now.
Right.
It sounds like August might be the earliest. If we um have to postpone it for a specific date, if we just table it and come back.
It sounds like probably our best bet is to just postpone it to a future date, non-specific or whatever you said, Nicole.
I think I think I agree with you, Chair.
I agree with that, Mr. Chair. This is John.
Okay. Okay. Well, I'm the chair, I can't make any motions, so does anybody have any more discussion or?
I don't think we need a motion. We just direct staff to that we're not gonna make any decision today and uh allow them to bring it back uh when things change.
Hi, this is Debbie Malley calling from Conoco Unified. How can I help you?
Um, we have somebody speaking. Um Nicole, so is that the case? We just, do we have to take a vote to postpone it? Or?
Sorry, I had to I had to mute on. Um yes, it is a motion to postpone.
Okay. Hello, anybody?
Mr. Chair, uh I'm happy to offer a motion. If the language is imperfect, please um correct me, Nicole. Um I move that the planning commission postpone consider consideration of this item until a future date that will be noticed as a brand new item for the planning commission at that time.
I'll second.
Hey, Commissioner Huth?
Yes.
Commissioner Malley?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yeah.
Commissioner Sinram?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, before we finish up on this, I would like for possibly Commissioner Brown and Commissioner Malley to speak um specifically, I mean, I know you already have, but specifically for staff on on what we would possibly like them to look into.
This is Commissioner Brown. Um so I think for myself, um I would like to look at the current traffic study um and determine if it addresses pedestrian traffic, which it possibly may. Um and also, I would like to ask staff to get in communication with Conoco Unified School District uh to talk about possible solutions to pedestrian traffic from the schools.
Okay, thank you. Uh Commissioner Malley? You're on mute, Bob.
I'm sorry, there were two of us talking in the car at the same time. One of us, one of us had to leave, and it wasn't me. Okay, a- as I stated, uh finding number one the establish establishment or maintenance operation of the use applied for under the circumstances of the particular case. Uh I've I believe that they are detrimental to the health, safety and morals of the community. Uh the uh persons residing and working in the neighborhood and that uh it's not a uh i- it's not a match. Uh if staff can come up with some ideas, staff and the uh some way to change my mind uh about how it fits in better than uh what I can see, then that's fine. But that's that's my uh major concern there. And uh as uh we've discussed it ad nauseam about the uh the roadway, this the traffic, the pedestrians, the kids uh back and forth uh whether it's twenty or a hundred, it doesn't matter to me. Uh I I I don't believe that it's a good thing to have uh cho- school-aged children walking past uh uh this type of business twice a day uh five days a week when schools are open, so um I I can't be any more clear than that is uh if uh staff has any questions, feel free to give me a call at home. Uh you have my cell phone number and we can discuss it, but uh uh I just don't see this operation working in this area that it's located. Uh it it would do much do much better, as I stated before. It would do much better in a uh like Main Street, Lower Lake, or you know, some commercial area where uh even uh at the other end of uh Lake Street where uh uh or Dam Road where uh all of the uh other commercial uh activity is at. But not right in the middle of a residential area like this, and uh I'll leave it at that for now.
Okay, thank you, Bob. Christina or John?
I have nothing further to add, thank you.
I have nothing further to add. I think I have enough um information to um, you know, um work. Thank you.
Okay. Um, does anybody, do we have any untimed staff updates?
Um, if it pleases the Chair and the Commission, I have some very great untimed staff updates. Um just um again, great job to the full team, the Guanac team. Um and thank you all for listening and paying such close attention and asking such insightful and um considerate questions of the project. As we mentioned before plenty of times, Adhazim is gonna be a really um big project for the county. Um on another note, that's kind of somewhat related to that. Um our housing element was approved and certified by the um by the state, so we're, the county is now eligible for CDBG funds. So we're, the county is now eligible for CDBG funds. Um, so, uh, hopefully at our next meeting, I'll have some more good news to share with you all. Probably for a number of grants related to housing and technical assistance for housing and they're making their way through. But, um, we were shut out from a number of CDBG funds because our housing element was not certified. Um, and now that it is certified, it was approved, um, by the board last week and it went up to the state. Um, it's rapidly moving its way forward. Um, we are going to make some changes to it, however. Um, but getting it certified by the state was a major win for the county.
Great. Good job.
Thank you. It was a team effort. And I would like to say thank you to the team, the CDD team, uh, for helping us get that ball over the goal line. Um, um, again, somewhat related to that, we are, um, looking to update our zoning ordinance, uh, specifically related to housing. Um, so that is something to keep on your radar as well and I would definitely keep you reminded of it. Um, and, um, I believe that is all that I have, um, for staff updates. Nicole, is there anything that you have to share? If it's appropriate for you to share right now?
Nicole, you're on mute.
I have a question for staff in the meantime, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, John.
I read an article in the Record B that there was a, a presentation to the Board of Supervisors about how the actual chambers can be used and will be used again soon. Do you have any update for the commission in terms of when we might, in, in part, at least repopulate the supervisors' chambers?
I do not, sir, but as soon as I get that information, I will be happy to share with you. Um, as you know, some of the unpleasantness that we've experienced and just some of the logistical difficulties, um, with the Zoom meeting. So as soon as I have that information, I would gladly share it with you all.
Thanks.
Uh, if I may, this is Kate. Um, Jake was actually the one that gave that brief presentation during the Board of Supervisors, so he might be the best person to ask.
Oh, there you go. Go ahead, Jake.
So we have been in the works of getting the hybrid stuff set up. Uh, there are a couple of more kinks that kind of need to be fleshed out. Uh, we were looking to have our first actual meeting in there. I wanna say, um, in July, the, that first week. Um, I don't know where that stands right now. And I'm not sure where B and G is with the, uh, final steps in that project as well. But we're looking at like, I think, um, the next two weeks here.
Sounds close.
Yes, close. Look forward to it. Nicole never unmuted, so I'm, I'm assuming she doesn't have anything to add.
I'm sorry, I missed, I missed your, uh, so I got distracted for a second. I missed your question. Could you ask it again?
Uh, no, it was actually Takara was asking if you had any, anything else to add for any staff update.
Uh, no, I, I have no staff update.
Okay. So are we adjourning the meeting?
I think so.
Yep, okay.
I'd like to say thanks to everybody for all your patience and understanding. I know it's out of order, but I did want to thank you all.
Okay, thank you, Terry. John? John, you were trying to say something?
Well, um, I, I believe we've learned that we need to make a motion to adjourn and, uh, I'm prepared to make a motion. Mr. Chair, I move that the June twenty-five, twenty-twenty meeting of the Lake County Planning Commission adjourn.
Second.
Okay, all right. If there's no opposition, we'll, uh, we'll be adjourned.
Thank you. Have a good day.
Okay.
Bye, everyone.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, Bob. Good luck today.
Good luck, Bob.
Yes, yes. Good luck, Bob.
Thank you, guys. Bye.
Bye.